It's all right. Nervous.
That's all.
You know, metabolize.
Yep, let's start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh. Awesome. Let's just go right to it. It's a point the chair. And the vice chair, we can do it all in one action if you desire.
I make a motion with Dave Mulbar as the chairperson and Craig Dozer as our vice chair.
I'll second.
It was Friday morning. See you.
Schultz. Okay, any more discussion on that anymore?
I go with discussion closed.
Awesome.
This was seven.
Those in favor voting aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side. Go Dave.
Go Dave.
Is there any conflict of interest with his agenda has?
Hmm.
Senior. Non will approve the agenda, reading of the minutes.
You got it. December thirty first, twenty twenty four, the board of supervisors met at three P M. With Gene Hyden, Chair presiding, members present, Hor Schultz, Dozar, Hyden, Mulbar, and Rossberg.
No.
Uh, board supervisors conducted the required twenty twenty four year end cash count. Minutes of the previous meeting read and approved, the board approved resignation of Lorraine Mees, Iowa Township trustee. Ted Bluestein, Chair of the Compensation Board, presented the board with their recommendations for the elected officials for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. No action was taken at this time. A motion was made by Mulbar, seconded by Dozar to approve the appointment of Denny Casper Bauer as Iowa Township trustee. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozar to approve the Hungary Canyons project agreement twenty five dash four in the amount of ninety seven thousand, five hundred twenty eight dollars for construction of a stream stabilization structure on King Creek in Vale. Project number LHC forty seven dash thirty, motion passed unanimously. On motion duly seconded, the board adjourned at four oh three P M. Agendas for the next meeting are posted available to courthouse on Friday, four thirty P M preceding the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Reapproval minutes. I guess aren't worth it. It's the one?
Yeah.
Go into supervisor reports. File.
And we.
Very early. I'm going on.
Well, the holiday season, I didn't have anything either. Well, not I did, I mean, I did have a twenty eighty meeting last Tuesday at noon.
Four. Nah. Remember it?
We're at our imagination station, probably around there, twelve, three.
I thought it was four.
No, it was three.
Okay.
I broke the record, it was four the month before.
Oh, okay.
Twelve oh three this month. So our goal next month is twelve oh two. We'll see if you can get that accomplished.
Very efficient.
Right.
Okay. Do you guys have any minute?
Jean? Really no meeting, but I did get a call from Molly Scott concerned about funding for the D C A T. She is, you know, all the meetings that she's been going to.
With Molly Scott?
Uh, she's the D C A T coordinator.
Okay.
And so she's afraid, and even last year, you know, the money would just wasn't there. She didn't even take a raise last year because.
They get leftover money from H H S or used to be A H S.
Redistributed.
They can redistribute even the programs that are supposed to be prepared if they don't get anything.
After school, her school programs.
Yep.
So she has taken a job working for E S A C schools because she's a little bit concerned about her job. So she's only going to be working part time, but she wanted to kind of just give me the heads up on that because I'm still the chair class. Um, and we had a long conversation about her concerns and the schools are underserved. She really believes in that this is no time to be cutting back on financing for a school based programs. But, you know, we barely have a voice anymore. Our meeting for that is not till the twenty ninth, and so we'll discuss that a little bit more. But she wanted to give me the heads up, she just accepted that position. Um, and I don't blame her, you know, if you know that the funding's not going to be there and, you know, you have to have it checked. But she's still going to work part time for Crawford and S A C. And so, um, that's coming up. But on Wednesday tomorrow, uh, they're having the mental health regular meeting. And so I'll sit in on that just kind of to listen, to kind of keep hearing what's going on, see if I can believe any information. I'm thinking about having Caitlin come one last time and talk to us about her, what she perceives and how this is really going to work for us. If you guys don't mind having it on the agenda next week, did you just have Caitlin Clark comes?
So are they giving her information on how it's going to change and who the new contact is going to be for mental health?
Well, that's why I'm going to stay tuned in because what Molly and I talked about yesterday, you know, after July first, if we have an episode in Crawford County similar to when we had the guy walking on the highway and wanting to have vehicular suicide and want somebody else to kill him, you know, who do we call? Who's going to, it's going to be somebody from Des Moines teleconferencing. The two choices would be send him to jail or send him to the E R, which is what we were spent nine years trying to get away from. You know, is to have a place that's set up to take care of those needs. So I think that we need to really zero in and like I tell everybody, I know we're a region, but what I care about is what's going on in Crawford County. What, who's going to take care of Crawford County? We have these seven regions. I think that we really need to stay tuned in to what the talk is about their plan for, and I'll just say Crawford County. So I'll tune into that tomorrow at two thirty and still keep my ear to the ground on what's going to happen with mental health.
Yeah. Well, Ty, if you don't mind, I'd like to piggyback off Jean because mine kind ties back, you know, she has to report it. Um, I had a state E C I board meeting and we approved our annual report, my Dr. Rose, from Bruce from Iowa State, talked about streamlined data collection. But we did have what, I wanted to jump in here, Kelly Garcia was on our Zoom meeting.
Ooh.
And kind of going over, E C I structure is typically local. I mean, it's local boards, local people making up those funds going to those regions.
Okay.
They don't have big regions because they wanted to keep it like we're S A C, Crawford, and B V County is our E C I region. But you're on.
Yes.
Um, Director Garcia talked about, there's going to be initiative for four year olds, which is great, but I think it's going to take more money out of E C I and give it to the school systems.
For four year olds?
Potentially, she couldn't give us details.
Well, four year olds are in preschool, which are normally ran, so.
Good E C I zero to five for those programs. Either way, but she just kind of gave us some glimpses of things that are being discussed without giving us details. And one of them was Medicaid investment. But she talked about E C I, but then she kind of jumped in to talk about mental health and that. Where I think people, they, we had very limited time with everybody was a little bit of a catch your breath. She started talking about how the mental health changes and how local control is important and stuff. And, and I, I think E C I might be modeled in the same way down the road, but I'm speculating myself now. And when she said that, well, we want to have local input, I thought, ooh, you're gonna, if you follow mental health, you're going to make us advisors and take those local boards and consolidate them. I don't know, but.
Well.
But like I said, there was no details that she actually could give at this time. There's just some initiatives that they're looking at.
So exactly when is the cat going to be back on how this is going to look?
I think during the session.
Think so? Because July first, which as you know, everything moves very slowly. And when you talk to the likes of a Don Mensah, you would think she would be in the loop a little bit. You would think they would want to keep some of those folks on the payroll. But the problem is it's going to be private now, and so they're going to lose those government benefits that they all love so much. So how are they going to keep it all so that we have some continuity of who's doing what? If it's gone private and they're not letting, I'm just asking for a brand.
Right, I don't know. For mental health, we'll have to see how that plays out. But this is just, E C I is something they want to, I think, look at going forward.
Did they talk about D C A T at all then and that?
Well, E C I kind of falls under D C A T again, and if the funding's cut, the fund, I mean, is.
They started cutting it last year already. So thank you very much for the updates.
All I had, I got region twelve coming up this week. I'd like to work on the supervisor budget with you guys a little bit later. Ty?
Well, I had no meetings last week of Mayor, that's the phone calls of concerns on budget. Uh, had several calls about the compensation board. Well, won't take those numbers for what you see yet, until we have time to decipher them. But, uh, and none of them are on the pleasant side. Um. That's about all I had for that stuff, but I got a meeting tonight.
Okay.
The E M A Commission's getting together. Uh, we're going to introduce Zach to all the mayors and, and the commission itself. And then we're going to go over some budget stuff and some, some, see what some of the ideas the mayors are having. Uh, Zach's actually been busy out going and meeting the mayors and he's already, you know, assuming a larger role with, you know, getting in there on the tower system and the communication stuff and, uh, got new paint in his office.
That's good.
Told him to get a desk, what's that?
That's good.
Yeah. And, uh, so he's, 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 he's settling in. Uh, got a new monitor for. One of them wasn't, uh, smart compatible or whatever you want to call it. Anyway, uh. The, uh. I mean, the mayors have some, some stuff, the input they want to bring forward and tonight that's going to happen and, and other budget stuff. But we're cleaning that up to, uh, there's one more payment for the tower system on this year. And I think that's part of that amendment, but then the, uh.
Part of what amendment?
If, if there's another amendment, we're going to have to do that. And then, uh. On the, uh, next year, it'll be in the budget. There's a one more, one last payment that's, was kind of scheduled for, I thought, August, but let's see.
Nine one one with Duane said there's some, highly likely, there's some money to help with that, so.
Okay, well, that sounds great.
We'll have to get together and try to figure that out.
Okay.
To where, make that money all work together.
That would be fabulous.
So.
And I had been trying to dig into the drone since you brought it, nine one one, or, you know, the nine one one with Duane. Made me think of the County Fire Association, they, they bought that one drone, the aerial drone, was that who bought that? That's kind of my understanding. And then they actually donated that to E M A. That's what I was told, that's what Zach got told anyway. So I said, well, I need to see some paperwork on that for insurance purposes, obviously.
I know. I thought County Fire Association bought it.
Yeah, they bought one. And we bought.
E M A bought the other one.
And E M A bought our, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think nine one one bought one.
No, that's what I'm saying, but you, when you said Duane, it made me think of County Fire Association, so I.
Oh, I, I.
That's, I'm sorry, I didn't mean nine one one.
Okay.
The, uh, County Fire Association bought it and then, and to my understanding donated it to E M A. So that's why the insurance was putting two drones in or supposed to be, or however that's working. Anyway, uh, so we're sorting through that because I said, well, if we don't have minutes or some kind of paperwork that says that, you know, we got to have that. So Zach's working on that. Uh. And then on the submersible, we didn't necessarily get, we didn't purchase the submersible, we bought the sonar, which is apartment submersible, I guess, would be my opinion, but, but, uh, that was kind of the trade back and forth there, I guess. So, uh, I don't know how that's got to be insured yet. But if it's, if it's Dennis and Fires, Submersible, other than the sonar, I think they should be getting the insurance. I'm trying to sort through all that. So that's what we're going to be working tonight on the.
Okay.
All right.
Did you get those insurance forms I sent you?
Yeah.
That file?
Yeah. Well, you have any more, we'll get into our long list of.
I'm on, that's it, that's all I got.
I just.
Did, uh, E nine one one move to a different office in the courthouse?
Him and Zach are working through it. Right now, Duane's still in there and they're, they're getting along. Fine-ish. I, at this point, the way it sounded to me is they're, no, that was a word. It might be a today word, but it might not be a tomorrow word, but I think. Work in progress, yeah. I think maybe that's actually, there's a lot to learn, a lot to take in. Maybe Duane is, there is a.
Yeah.
A source type thing that helps through the process.
It's an awful small office though for.
It's ex, well.
Well, he's not.
It's cleaned out, it's actually, it looks, it's way bigger than I.
When he's first day at work.
When I walked in there today, it's, it's way bigger than I looked before. There's, there's room in there now.
Did you know about how many hours Duane would be in there in a?
In a week?
A day?
No, I, I can't imagine it'd be a lot. We can continue to work on getting him out of there, which makes sense to get him out of there, but just hasn't.
Well, it's a starting point where at least get the whole room cleaned out, new paint.
It's painted.
That was a great start.
Zach's got a new desk and like Ty said, he's got a new computer or whatever in there.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's another workstation set up in there for, I'm assuming, uh, Tim has got his workstation set up in there, so.
Well, Roger had mentioned there could be other offices available, I just didn't know if anybody, um. It would be hard on your first day at work to have to say, I don't like the way this is, I want my own office. You know, that to me would be hard on your first day. It's just my opinion. And I wouldn't, you know, wouldn't want him to not feel like he has a place to call home. And I'm sure Duane brings a lot of valuable questions and, but it's a small office, so.
Maybe a good question for you, ask Ty how, how he feels it's going.
What's that?
Ask Zach how he feels it's going tonight.
Yeah, okay.
I just, I did all that discussion about moving himself, big talk with that email that the Larry Harry sent me.
Yep, I've printed it.
Email, you printed it, the invoice, okay, perfect. Which I did talk to Dave Rothe and his doctor Tottenham to getting the gas pumped to that new generator. But we're going to set a goal, realistic goal from this board to get people moved into that building.
And I got the paperwork sent back to D M U for rebates, I dropped that off personally to them.
We already got the check back.
Oh.
Okay.
That worked out great then. How much did we get?
I can't tell you off the top of my head.
No worries.
Sorry.
They had sent that to me and I, my scanner wasn't, so I dropped it off, D M U this and gave it a send it to make sure that we didn't miss out on that, so it sounds like.
I mean, we got to get the lights changed upstairs.
Yep, they're, they're working on that.
They're working on that.
Yep.
Now that the holidays are over, we need to push and get things done. February one, is that a realistic goal?
I wanted to get the deep cleaning done, but I didn't want to do it because there's dust and things coming from those new lights. And so I, that can't be pushed off.
Ask them to get the lights done and then do the cleaning and then.
So that kind of, you know, I didn't want to have to do it twice.
The downstairs basically needs that door put in from.
Yeah, and the window, right?
Window.
And if you give me the number, I can call and just kind of see the estimated time.
Remedy glass.
I, I might still have, same people that did the sliding door, so I can just call back.
Maybe Gasol's got a little defending shut once they put that door in, which can be, kind of be done while we're moving things in. So if that's not, otherwise I think the downstairs is pretty much doneish or clean.
Louise has her, uh, desk kind of put up and they've been over there with all that.
They've been over there building the furniture and stuff.
Has found out that her U is too big, so it's going to be an L.
So. It's February one, I think a pretty realistic goal, we need to get that moved.
We do, uh, I keep trying to find out if there's been anybody calling interest in that building. But I think part of the problem is it just looks so cluttered and so, you know, that nobody is looking at it. I think we need to get it cleaned out.
I'd say at least March first.
At least.
No, no later than March.
Because then you need to decide if it needs, you know, does some spackle needs to happen? I mean, or there's some blemishes on the walls that need taking care of and.
It doesn't show very well.
Right.
Because the lobby's got boxes stacked a mile high and there's stuff underneath the stairwell and there's cubicles and it's claustrophobic.
Let's say March first, that way you can tell the Board of Health, they will be out there by March first.
Yeah.
No later than.
That way they have it in their head, they have to be out there by March first.
Right.
And we are.
Are they planning on getting out of that NEPL building too?
Well, that's part of that too. There are things in there that are expired, so it's going to take, uh, everybody from their own department that has put stuff in there. It's not, I, my idea was I'd just go in there and get a dumpster, but it's not that easy. There's things that they can use, but there are like vaccines or things that have expired, I can't think.
They had to be disposed of.
That have to be, that they got with the grant that they didn't use. And that's part of that at the end of the year when we use up all that money to, to get the grant. And it's something that we didn't really need, but if we don't spend that grant money, then we're not going to get it. So we shove it in that, uh, storeroom, so.
He per.
But before we let that go, we have to make sure that our meeting place for, uh, H H S is ready to go. So that we don't leave them without a place.
When we move into that new building and they have this grant money left, they'll just shove that pool of stuff they need to spend money on. And shove that pool.
On the public health board side, we maybe need to reevaluate, um, the, the better use of taxpayer dollars because those grants are taxpayer dollars. And so if we're ordering things that we're not using and just storing it, that's not a good use of it. But I understand if you don't use it, you're not going to get it. And that's what's wrong sometimes with the government funding is, uh, kind of got to use it. So we might have to reevaluate that.
But if we don't use it, when somebody else uses it?
Well, if we knew how to make that happen, instead of putting it out of sight, out of mind, and then it gets expiration, there's expiration dates on some of it. You know, the things like, uh, wheelchairs and the things that, that don't have expiration date, uh, those can go places.
Wouldn't there have to be, uh. Some. What's, we're looking for.
Over some.
Christian, uh, what is in?
Right, mission.
Mission, yeah, that looks for all that stuff.
Well, it's, um, grassroots.
I don't know. We just have to figure out what partners could possibly use some of the things and some.
It used to be that one that they said, uh, one of them connects is up. Mission Central or whatever, they take all that stuff and send it overseas, those packing things through, but anyway.
On that thought though, Cal, I thought you were attending those coalition meetings. At the Iowa State Extension Office.
Oh, I do, once, yes, I, they haven't had.
That might be a good place to bring that up. A network of those types of services.
There is, that's, uh, poorly attended, uh, um, but I haven't had that for a while, but yeah, yes.
You have to buy.
Yes, well, and that's what we have to do is start.
March first, you and I probably need to get back to, now that the holidays are over, cracking the whip over there, make sure things are keep moving.
I've got Louise making duplicate keys to that, uh, door, the A H door downstairs, uh, is two up. So she can just go in through the basement.
All right.
Uh, and then once they get their fobs, then we'll have those keys available, face of fobs. But she's just making five above one for her and Dave and.
Things look like they are moving forward.
They are, but her, we've kind of got off the track of getting the gook off of those windows. I was on a little bit of a roll there for like a day.
In the basement?
Yes, realizing that the goo out was going to work, but then I got a little blister from my, um. And you decided that was not my kind of job, and then I found a different tool. I don't like a blister. So anyways, but it's going to work, and so Louise and I are going to get that done.
Yeah. Does anybody else have anything to add to supervisor report?
Go ahead with the budget.
If not, let's move on to our discussion, take action item, we have a long list of things to improve today for our first meeting of the year.
You do.
First is approval of the official newspapers, which you have all that burning.
Yeah, do you want to, here are the three.
Which would include the Manila Times, the Observer, and the Bulletin Review.
Does the Bulletin Review still meet their requirements for the number of subscribers?
That's what they file.
Did, uh, LaPrentza said not file? Because that one time that was talked about that they were.
Right, I don't know that they've been in circulation long enough to do that.
They met, they started their.
I don't know what the requirements are, but they probably did.
I would say next year they'll probably need it, I would think.
I would hope.
What is their number, Ty, for Dennis and Bulletin Review, do they have their number subscriptions on there?
Manila Times is five hundred and fifty-five.
Didn't you see that on there?
I saw the Manila Times, I saw the band, that's right here.
And these are pretty typically gone where in the past.
Well, we're, I mean, it's required by law as to who we have to do it with by Iowa statute.
Well, you would think it'd be the same form that they're sending in for the.
Right, you would think each paper would fill out the same.
Statement of ownership, United States.
Fill in number of copies.
I think it could be, I think it needs to be that copy to make it the official personally. And the Observer has nine hundred and twenty-seven average copies in the preceding twelve months. And they're saying nine hundred and six to the nearest filing date.
Okay, that's more than a dollar.
So it's gone down a little bit. Total distribution, nine hundred and sixty-three and.
Nailed in county paid subscription to six eighty-three here. For the Dennis and Bulletin Review? Yeah.
I'll pass these around so everybody can look at them.
Single issue.
That's less than. The Observer, so it's not, I figured.
Is that, so in the code, is there a certain number that they have to have? I was thinking that.
It is.
Gosh, oh gee, we should remember that from year to year, doggone it.
Well, this is going to be an ongoing challenge with decline in newspaper subscriptions and the rise of social media outlets or media outlets online.
Absolutely.
Until the state really addresses, like Craig said, we're defined by code.
Craig's looking it up to see how many, because there's a, a minimum amount of, it has, it's a percentage of the population, if I remember correctly.
The Innocent Bulletin's net press run, which, you know, that stuff that goes to the stores, convenience stores for sale too, was a thousand twenty-six. But how many of them actually get, don't make it to the trash can, I don't know. Number of copies of single issue published.
That was harder to read than hers.
Yeah, this is like trying to read your tax printout for God's sake. Almost like one of those things.
Why can't they make us a pie chart so we can see exactly how many are in the newspaper and how many does. Oh, he'll get it.
I, total paid distribution.
I, um.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to decipher this because you got, and, uh. It says eight sixty for total paid distribution. So I'm going to guess that is that subscriptions.
I.
Mail, outside county paid subscriptions is zero. Paid distribution outside the mails includes sales through dealers, carriers, street vendors. See that, so that's the six eighty-three plus one seventy-seven, which is this eight sixty is the total paid distribution.
Do you suppose that that includes when they say paid, you know, when Hy-Vee sticks their little flyer in the inside of that paper? That's a part of the distribution possibly because they paid.
Well, I think the distribution of this has got to be the papers being distributed, wouldn't have anything to do with mail or.
Well, or inside of it though, I don't know. I think it seems a little, uh. Should be easier to decipher, quite frankly.
Total distribution. We could probably call Richard and make him funding a list.
Well, you go for that.
Meeting, it'd be over before he's done, you know? Um, sorry.
Well, what in the, in the grand scheme of things?
Copies in that district.
I mean, other than.
It's not district, is that like the ones that.
We don't want to approve them, we don't.
Stephen, eight sixty-one, sixty-six.
My right or what?
But it has to be subscribed.
Depending by code, what it requires.
That's right.
So it has to be that I wrote you a check, which I, I've done to, um.
Do we have to approve every one that's brought to us?
They don't meet the qualification, we'd be.
I don't know that we have to have more than two, do we?
I can't tell you off the top of my head, I don't have the code in front of me.
We're going to find it.
I don't want to stick out.
Do you want to see these again?
I'm sure. I'm sure they will.
I think they will as well, myself.
You're alright.
I mean, it's, it says in Iowa code here, in counties um having a population of less than fifteen thousand, which we don't, two such newspapers or one if there is only one published. In counties having a population of less than fifty thousand, um.
Or.
Okay, that one doesn't pertain, but it says in all other counties, three such newspapers, not more than two of which shall be published in the same city. So we are dictated by law since we don't fall, we're not less than.
Fifteen.
Right, we're not less than fifteen, we're not more than fifty, and we're not less than fifty with that, we have divided divisions. If you don't fall in any of those, then you have to have three as long as two are not in the same city.
Which all these are.
Which all these are different cities, so we're kind of stuck as to the ones that we have to.
Well, does Westside and Manila's qualify as the same paper or separate?
I mean, just because they're owned by the same person.
But they're.
It's different.
Circulation's different. But there was something about uh the same city.
Yeah, but I mean, they're different cities.
Chad their own office.
Westside, Manila, they're different.
I mean.
So from what Craig just read, it looks like the three are already nowhere.
In counties in which three newspapers are to be selected, the three showing the largest number of such subscribers shall be selected, except when such three newspapers are all published in the same city. In which case the two papers having the largest list of subscribers.
So we really only got three people that are in.
Yeah.
And they're all different cities.
Right.
So pretty much all.
Only thing I can say going down the road, if a paper like LaPrenda ever got accredited or had subscriptions and they qualified, then it would be up for us to decide between them versus the bulletin.
Right, but we'd have to pick the one that had the most subscribers.
Yeah.
But where are they getting this? It says per Iowa code, the Bulletin Review devotes approximately sixty percent of its daily space to news and information hurting it to Crawford County. Where in the code does it say that?
That I don't know.
Per Iowa code.
Then I'd give the code number.
Sixty percent of their publication in Crawford County?
The people of Denison that still get it call it the Harrison Tribune for some reason.
You would think that he would read that to me, that per the code that they at least they need to devote approximately sixty percent of its daily space. And they are only once a week paid subscriptions of the weekly newspaper.
Interesting.
That that sounds like a.
Yeah.
Bridge to both.
With most of the circulation based in Crawford County. It doesn't say a hundred percent. It says most. So it seems to me like the words were uh very strategically picked that most of its subscribers are based in Crawford County.
I mean.
I don't know, maybe.
What is the wishes of the board?
We have three that apply.
Three that apply.
Wishes of the board are to.
Well, we have to do three by the code.
So.
It don't sound to me like we.
The wishes of the board are to obey the law and the code as dictated to us by the state of Iowa.
To keep moving on.
So I would make a motion that we approve.
Well, we know if we have another one next to that at least compares exceeds them, you have a choice to make next to. So I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, the pointing, the.
Do you do? I do.
Then I'll.
You're not used to hearing me make motions.
I'll second, I'll support your motion.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I mean, I will just say that it does say that you have to have subscribers for at least six consecutive months. So LaPrenda probably doesn't.
No, probably not. This year they will.
Are you talking about LaPrenda or are you talking about the Free Press?
The Free Press.
I guess the Free Press, yes, yes.
Because they're separate papers, no different than Observer and.
Right.
Yep, so.
Well, any further discussion on favor say aye?
It's a resolution.
Resolution, sorry. Oh, here we go. Thank you for catching that. Resolution. So Kyle.
Aye.
Craig.
Aye.
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 Jean.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion approves.
One down, seventeen to go.
Was the rate different or is it saying it might be outside the four we voted aye? But I mean, I guess it don't really matter.
What rate?
When we, when we pay.
They, yeah, there's Iowa code that we're just establishing.
Something's there that I I.
I know it's a reduced rate, but.
And and I need to get more information because I just read it briefly, but it did say that each office, the auditor, reporter, treasurer can for you to publish your public notices that you can pick on any paper you want. It doesn't have to be the county official newspaper.
And it depends on what it's, what the notice is for. Code, like if it's a budget, it tells us.
Oh, I see.
It tells us what the requirement is of that publication. So it depends.
Okay.
Yep, yep. All the different ones are, have different requirements. So, yeah.
Let's move on to the approved resolution twenty-five to pay claims prior to audits.
Yeah, let me read some of this to you. Um therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Crawford County that the county auditor be authorized to issue warrants prior to audit by the Board of Supervisors for the following purposes. For salaries and payroll, if the compensation has been fixed or approved by the board, the salary or payroll shall be certified by the officer or supervisor under whose direction or supervision the compensation is earned uh for withholdings of taxes, FOAB, Medicare, IFRS, union dues, credit union garnishments, tax deferred compensation, direct deposits and insurance, life, health, dental, cancer, interim employment. So that is what we are authorized, if you give us permission, to pay without. You know, you, every other week you get the listing of the claims, but payroll is different.
So moved. I have a motion. Okay. Second by Ty. Resolution, any further discussion, I guess? None? Kyle?
Yep.
Craig?
Aye.
Ty?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Resolution passed.
Armative.
Number three, a resolution naming depositories.
Well, I'm glad you read that right.
So it's uh Wells Fargo, um ten million, Crawford County Trust and Savings, ten million, Westside State Savings, ten million, Bank Iowa, twenty-five million, United Bank of Iowa, ten million, Defiance State Bank, twenty-five thousand, and I Pate, twenty-five million.
Those are no different than last year.
I believe that's correct. Yeah. I mean, you're right.
Well, Karen.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve those.
Motion by Kyle, do we have a second?
Thanks.
Ty, seconded it? Resolution, Kyle? Sam?
Aye.
Aye. Craig?
Aye.
Ty?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Excuse me. Thanks. Number four. You alright, Karen? We good?
Yeah, I have a handy dandy spreadsheet. I will keep up.
Alright.
Signature authorizing CEO change, region twelve.
Just for the signatures on region twelve.
And it's for the chair of the Board of Supervisors.
Yeah.
And it just, so yeah, we just always let them know who our new chair is.
Are you standard? You're you're.
Yep, you got it.
I'll make a motion to approve the signature authorization.
Click it.
Motion by Jean, seconded by Craig. Resolution, Kyle?
Actually says it's not a.
Oh, this is not a resolution.
No.
Oh, no. Thank you. So on favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye.
Next one.
I have the resolution.
Easy lemon.
Next three are resolved.
Number five is resolution regarding excessive economic efforts and approving and promoting of such efforts.
Yep.
Where did these come from, Karen? Just for curiosity sake.
I don't want to say it.
It's something we've always done. I know, it's not my fave.
Ooh.
I remember we started doing this one when I was on the board.
Go ahead and read it aloud if you want. All your cohorts in crime would.
Yeah, the state of Iowa generally Crawford County, I haven't figured out in the past several years experienced economic including loss of small business, under all the tax base. State law, Crawford County is not potentially diverse, provided a stable economic base, but is in large part dependent on agriculture and agribusiness. Current economic problems in small business industry have reached sufficient serious proportions that general welfare of the city of Crawford, of the county is threatened thereby is therefore the best interest of the citizen of Crawford County to take steps reasonable, calculated to lead to the first economic development of Crawford County. Crawford County does not have sufficient resources to hire, oh, this is the, that we work with.
CDC.
CDC.
And we give money to support them, so.
That we continue. So if we didn't sign that today.
I think I remember asking that.
Could you, in the bottom, could you just say that this resolution remains in place until opposed or until rejected or until voted down? And so you didn't need to do that every single year?
It almost makes sense to do that because there's a lot of resolutions out there that we, that have been out there since nineteen seventeen, as you found out. That we.
I think probably the purpose.
But if we have them that were brought to our attention every year, they may not be in place since nineteen seventeen.
That's what I was fixing to say.
So you suggested we bring them all forward?
Yeah. Certainly is important, I swear to God.
And it doesn't take much time to make sure that we're all staying uh the course of how important we.
Obviously.
I mean, because that's how many times have we, I mean, even with this president board makeup, how many times have we asked the question, well, how much do we need to support CDC?
We started that four years ago.
That does not spell out what we actually have to.
What we.
It doesn't say on the map.
It just is a recognition of every year of why.
Yeah, that they're supporting the county's economic efforts and.
I mean, as long as they're working, then we could say we keep doing, otherwise like Kyle brought up in the past, maybe we create our own if they, if we feel that they're not supporting the outside of Denison sufficiently. But with the new Paul and I think they, I think they're.
Right track.
Yeah.
I think so.
Paul's, uh they're thinking about bringing in a national rodeo, kind of a thing that will bring in everybody in the county with uh horse.
Horse practice stuff.
But I think the question was answered.
That can ride a pig.
Why we do this every year? Because.
Right.
We all want to know that was the problem.
Yep.
Yep, I think that's.
So is there a.
I'll make that motion to approve that.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
Second by Jean. And this is a resolution, so.
Yes, sir.
In favor say aye. Kyle?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Ty?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Resolution passed. Number six, resolution authorizing county engineer to execute certificates for farm-to-market projects from Crawford County. Yep.
So moved.
And motions by Craig, seconded by Ty. This is a resolution. On favor say aye. Kyle?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Ty?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Tragic pause.
That little glue here, that person's such deep sleep blocks might have even.
Yep. Oh, yeah, mine does that sometimes.
You're already.
Tricks.
Matrix.
Should we have that worded in there? What's that? He's moving on. Number seven, approved resolution regarding construction evaluation on master matrix. What would you like to?
I I wondered if, you know, I mean, we 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 put that in Paul's hands to ensure satisfactory. I mean, should that be worded in there? Never had it, man. But I mean, with new engineers coming on, so they understand that's their responsibility on the behalf of this board to oversee proper adherence for the master matrix on their mineral management plant? Or is this sufficient to you guys? I mean, it's worked in the past, but that's because Paul always knew he was supposed to do it.
Well, I think all transitions.
Just a question.
It's a conversation that we need to have with Ben at the moment and maybe with Paul to. Okay. I'm not sure Paul will also help Ben transition and cover these bases.
Okay.
We have a real old resolution saying that he will, so.
Well, it didn't say that he will, just says regarding construction about evaluation on master matrix.
So in that, does it say it falls on the engineer?
Oh, I don't know. That's why I was just asking.
Well, that's, I guess we're assuming.
Yes, he's our employee.
Duty's ass assigned.
And his head is signed.
Duty to.
Does it say that in our resolution?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, it doesn't say it in this resolution.
It says it all.
Those are just the facts, ma'am.
Okay. I only want the facts, ma'am.
Resolution.
All right.
Well, we have. I make a motion that we uh.
Ty made a motion.
You made a motion?
Second?
You made a motion?
I don't.
Ty made a motion. Craig seconded it?
Trying to take turns with the motions in the seconds.
Yep. On favor say, well, say aye in favor, but it is a resolution. Kyle?
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Ty?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Number eight, Lord mini appointments. We all look at our list.
We did.
Um. Get it on time.
And I've asked and you're ecstatic about those.
I have.
It's given me.
I don't think so either. I mean, we have the list of all.
We do.
I'm very happy with the boards I sit on.
I thought you were giving me.
You want it, Jean?
I would give me something to do. That I'm going to put on.
Then you could do something to do on that right here.
So do you and I flip? See, could you just talk like you?
Well, or.
Or do you just take seniority over me?
Well, that's.
I guess the chair does, the chair does have some.
Discussing you guys.
Oh, got cornered. Is it? I don't really need two supervisors.
I would hand off central Iowa, but in the, with where things are in that right now, I think I better probably just stay on it. So it so maybe don't have to learn that.
Back up in case.
You sure can, yeah.
You know, you. I mean, Jean, if you, if you're looking for something, I mean, I would let you do West Central Community Action. I mean, those are.
Quarterway.
Those are mostly Zoom meetings.
Alright.
And they are not every month, but they are sometimes consecutive months. You know what I mean? Like we might meet June, July, and then we'll be like, we're not meeting till September, and then we'll meet October, and we'll maybe skip December type of thing. Do you, do you want to do that?
I feel like I need to replace mental health with something because that will be a big point in my giving.
So we just need, I can notify Wendy Mueller is the, that.
You'll be good at that.
You are taking that way. She, you will be on the email list. You will decipher all those acronyms.
Are you doing IT something though, or no?
Well, they don't seem to want to give it up.
No, 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 no.
I think you're misconstruing that completely.
I honestly think.
They both want to give it up.
With IT, you could have a primary and alternate.
Primary that they don't, they'd have two go? Just one?
I mean, we are the only two there. There's just, I mean, Terry's there, Martha's there.
Lynn is there.
Lynn is there, and then me and Dave are there.
Kind of overkill in it, aren't you?
Well, that's what I'm saying. We should change that to a primary and alternate, so you can be the primary, Craig can be the alternate.
I'd be, be in favor of that.
And then you take over West Central, which Craig, you and I are going to be on more boards and vice chair and chair.
Yeah.
Sounds like a.
I would hand off central Iowa with all the stuff going on over there right now. I'm just going to keep my.
So you got those changes written down? So you got those changes written down?
There's a lot to decipher.
Which what?
We're getting them updated. Good time to pause pause in because we got Paul here.
And we can just ask him about the master matrix.
Perfect time.
Yeah.
Oh.
Which we just.
There hasn't been much of that lately.
But has that been your responsibility in the past? So that'll be something that.
Yeah, that makes me, yeah, yeah. Deep them about, okay, because we didn't have anything on air when I was reading.
Have you done that? Have you?
Regarding construction evaluation, master matrix, we didn't say, you know, as our designated representative in that regard. Yeah, there's never been a designated representative, I don't think specifically on there. I've just done it. So it's not terribly difficult to do, and there hasn't been any. As long as they get to know how to do it, right, and leave them work. Yeah. It's they're pretty well done by code. I mean, like Smithfield's got their, they've actually got people and a lot of them that don't provide it for their growers. Like Joe Alley does a lot of them around here, you know? Right, so just what it is, it's for confined animal feeding operations, could be cattle, could be swine, generally swine, but there have been some cattle facilities. Probably read it more now. Once they reach a certain capacity, then the board has said that they will they will invoke the master matrix view in Crawford County. Okay, and so the county board can elect to do that. They don't the that it just defaults to whatever the standard essentially separation distances are from different things, wells, critical public facilities, restaurant residents. And so adopting the master matrix essentially requires that those facility be further away from all of these things. And so then you evaluate, there's a scoring, the matrix is a scoring matrix. And so the the consultant that's working with the producer will create the matrix, and then I usually just evaluate to see whether or not the distances are in fact correct. And then you work with the DNR to do that. So I mean, back in the day, there was a lot of those, but there haven't been any for quite a while. So but that's essentially what it is, is that it requires it to be further away than in the non-matrix. Sorry. It's due to the concentration of minimal production.
So you're aware, and we can continue on with you afterwards. We have a ten AM public hearing.
Okay, yeah, I don't have a whole lot tomorrow. I didn't even bring up on the agenda because it wasn't really like anything put on there, but I asked these guys to come up. I did want to talk about one thing. I kind of, you know, I know the budget review or kind of meetings for you guys isn't till the end of the month, but there's I think there's three there. This is kind of what what you're going to see on the front is kind of the summary that I I showed you before, and you know, this kind of bounces around a little bit as we move things and tweak things. And on the back is kind of the equipment for purchase purchase proposal. And so, you know, like anything, you 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 don't have to give me the green light on on this, but I've got a trailer and a semi tractor, centered up trailer and a semi tractor in this budget here, okay, along with a three hundred thousand dollar amount for the charter oak shop. Okay, in the current fiscal year. And so, or not the current, the proposed fiscal year. So again, I think that shop is probably a project that would be left a year from now, February twenty twenty six, maybe March, with construction starting later. You know, in the spring, early summer, part of the payment being in twenty twenty six, and then the other part being in twenty twenty seven. And so you know, ordering and getting equipment is always something that, you know, the sooner you can act on it, the better. But whenever you feel comfortable with the numbers and stuff, it would be nice to to move on on those items, but it's kind of just letting you know that that's that's kind of where we're at. Okay. And so the the back of that sheet shows some things in orange and green, you know, the the purchases of equipment and sale. And one thing we don't really know for sure is I'm still trying to get another number on used motor graders that we're going to take delivery of two new ones in May. If we do that, well, if it goes to Ziegler, that's prayed. So it shows my expenses are less, my revenues are also less. If it goes to mid country, who's the other one that I've been trying to get a number from? Then we take that as a revenue, not a trade, you know, and so the the numbers kind of bounce around a little bit there just.
It washes usually, but.
It works its way out. It's just where the numbers end up at. So anyhow, but just throwing that out is we kind of.
Four semis and a collector's item?
Pardon that, four semis and a collector's.
Been around a long time.
Actually, yeah.
If you ask me, I think you get one of the older Macs and we keep that Ford, which pre-deaf is a workhorse.
Yeah.
I would trust that over one of the.
Been around as long as I've been.
An old steel cab probably.
What year is what? What year is that?
It's like a seventy or eighty.
They don't make them like they used to.
Eighty seven, yeah, something like that. I think we bought that.
You bought it, didn't you?
We bought that Ford Dodge. Yep, John Law is involved in that one.
A good truck.
Has been a great truck for us. And so. It's like a like a three fifty in it or? I couldn't tell you what it sounded like a number.
Nine speed then or?
Ten speed.
Ten speed?
That's the one I got my CDL.
Oh, my goodness.
Maybe the transmission.
Any idea what we paid for that? Do you have any idea what we paid for that?
I think about twenty seven five, something like that. I could go back, I can I can find out, but we didn't pay, we didn't pay a whole lot for it.
Still worth maybe twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's been a good, well, those are estimates.
I know, but still, but still.
Bring what it brings it to sale.
In your mind.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Somebody would give that.
But but anyhow.
Be a good green truck.
Yeah, and so these guys, you know, on the budget, you know, we worked through with them and Kathy, and we worked through all the all the details of the claims and and revenue side of things. So, you know, so they have an understanding of kind of where the numbers come from. Budgeting in in our department is is a little bit of guesswork. I just got to be honest with you because.
It is for most of us.
And really, you know, you just don't know when certain things will happen. There's just a lot of things that are variable in in what we do.
Especially health. Health.
Yeah, that's gone up a lot. Yeah, that's a that's somewhat predictable. Well, once we know the number, we're pretty pretty sure, but you know, when your budget year ends, June thirty, I think the new one starts July first, and you're middle of hollow gravel, you're middle of the construction. There's just a lot of things that play into that.
Where are those things going to land?
So like when you're buying.
Where are those things are going to land at, you know, where you.
Well, yeah, we're talking about maybe putting charter oak shop somewhere else that, you know, I don't know where that'll land, but, you know, that'll impact something somewhere along the way.
Are you halfway through with construction?
Yeah.
Done with gravel haul or you're just getting started or?
Yeah. Yeah. So that's kind of where we're at. And I do have in here, it's not in this number, but if, you know, in my overall budget, you know, I'm looking at a two hundred thousand dollar direct payment from the rural basic like we've been doing to pay, and I don't know if that'll, you know, if that doesn't happen, that that then that impacts this number over here and what we do over here. So you guys know better kind of where that overall picture is going to be, but, you know, I've been very fortunate because this board and these years, the past boards have always been supportive of what we do. And that's that's, you know, a testament to, you know, you know, I think you you approve of what we do, but not a lot of counties pay directly out of the rural basic fund to supplement the money that they transfer to secondary roads. And so.
Paul, I think that's been a great, great way to target, especially in the spring, wet spots with extra limestone. I mean, I hear so many positives out of the country about that because you get a bad spot, you go to hit it.
It 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 really, that's a good point, Dave, and I think for these guys to understand that, you know, that started probably about seventy, maybe close to ten years ago now. Where the board just said, hey, you know, how can we get more crushed limestone? And that was how we did it. And so, you know, we we don't get as many calls about the condition of the roads. And I think that's really, over time, has really helped out, especially in the spring of the year. I used to burn gravel in the spring coming up out of Gossor with cattle, and you don't hear anybody bitching northern anymore. Really? Yeah. That's it. And it just, it does, it makes a difference. It comes at a cost. And this is one of the things, you know, as you talk to your your county supervisors throughout the state, you know, that's a disparity, in my opinion, for our area, is we don't have ground here. We have to truck it all in from a long ways away. You know, if you're some of these counties to the north, I mean, they're, you know, even St. I can't even, how much closer they are to Fort Dice. You know, last last year, this year, twenty twenty four, we spent over a million dollars just on finally ground we're contract holders.
Well, but to me, it's such a great way to walk a fine line without overtaxing. People say, well, just white rock everything. And it's like, well, that's not the answer either. But when we target those spots that need it and they need a little extra, this is just a good way to to do it.
I I think we found a really, we're at a pretty good place, I think, you know, there'll be out, there's always people out there that say that it could be better here and there. But I think they've improved considerably because of that, so. Well, you can't holler for property tax reduction and still say you want better roads all the same.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, it it everything comes at a cost. And unfortunately, we got to haul all of our stuff a long ways to get it here. You know, though, I I and I've thought about doing this, you know, I whenever you talk about it, I think about when I'd go up to Humboldt County and load pigs and drive theirs, especially in the summer, late summer. There's chuck holes, and I mean, that makes our washboard seem pretty simple to deal with. Yeah. When all this, you got a truck that's doing that, and you think about, wow, under that car, it's. Yeah, you know, I mean, when you got them type of things, that's what all white rock gives you. So you got to have a happy balance. You know, you do.
Yeah, that's great.
That's the one that's important, ain't it, remember? Just like the picture I sent to you from Texas with the washboard. Oh, yeah, that's for real. True, where there's gravel, there's washboards, trust me. Now you need testing. Yeah, that's really all I had.
Paul, I just I just had one question on here, that you have a twenty twenty five, I'm assuming that's reestimated.
Yeah.
And then a twenty twenty five that you submitted last year.
Yeah.
And on that beginning balance, why is the beginning balance different?
Because what we actually, see, I had to estimate, last year, a year ago, I was.
Because like the twenty twenty four actual, it's got an ending balance of two point six. And then for year twenty twenty five, it doesn't start with that two point six.
No, because I had to do this a year ago, and I didn't know what the what the actual ending balance of that current fiscal year was going to be, just like I don't know what the ending balance of this current fiscal year is going to be. So I estimated it. And when I did the reestimate last year, I I don't recall because I don't have it on here, I would have that in another file. But you you can see I used the actual value for twenty twenty four in my twenty twenty five reestimate. And again, it just shows the the uncertainty. Unlike fuel and stuff, that's. Of a lot of things.
So you were, a year ago, you were estimating the actual balance to be two point three, two eight.
Right.
And it turned out to be two point six, seven nine.
Correct. That's correct. That's correct. Yeah. And so like right now, I'm estimating that the ending balance in June, okay, will be one million nine hundred sixty three thousand. But it won't be that.
Right, alright.
It'll be something different.
Gotcha.
And the way I do things is it is it's usually higher.
Yeah.
It it will normally be higher because I'm trying to, you know, be on the conservative side. I don't think we'll end up with a one point five, two nine in in balance at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty six either. I think that I've probably got some building cushion there, but but anyhow, I hope that answers. If you have any other questions, why don't you give them the details, any of this?
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. That's on you, buddy.
It is ten AM.
So, yeah, you're kind of in training. He's spending a lot more time up here in the front office and.
Thank you, guys.
Takes a lot.
Thank you. We have approached ten AM. We have a public hearing. We have a motion to open the public hearing.
Get motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion in a second on favor of opening the public hearing. Say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Public hearing is open. Do we have any written responses?
Old Jake don't look like he's here to dispute it.
I never got anything. Do we have any on public? We have a few on Zoom.
We have a user who'll have to identify themselves.
Yeah, there's user.
I don't.
User, would you please identify yourself on Zoom so we can note the attendance?
Nice to be there for a public hearing. So your supervisor's here.
Yep. And they walk away. Nice if they identified themselves, though.
They can send a text if they want to, but we do need to notify who's attended our public hearings.
There's one thing that.
I don't have any idea who that is.
Nice to kick them off.
Nobody told me they were going to be here. I don't know.
Here we can, here you can leave it open for a little bit and hit a couple of the other thing. I mean, we want to, but we don't have to either.
Right, we don't have to. It's not that big a deal. Well, there is no written or public statements for this public hearing. I'm entertaining a motion to. As the public.
Motion made.
I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Public hearing is closed, so now we can move on to discussion, take action of resolution twenty twenty five, eight appropriations to departments.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution appropriating the funds to the departments.
I have a motion by Kyle.
Second.
Second by Craig. Any further discussion?
Do we have that, how that's actually being distributed to the first for my review? I thought I had it here, but just just to refresh my memory.
Thirty six thousand to the auditor's office, thirty one thousand to the county farm department, two hundred eighteen thousand fifty two dollars to roadside. Courthouse, and most of that's capital improvement funds, three hundred and thirty five thousand two hundred and seventy five.
Okay.
Totalling six hundred and twenty thousand three hundred and twenty seven dollars.
Very good. Thank you.
You bet. Good. No further discussion. It is a resolution. Say aye if you're in favor. Kyle.
Aye.
Craig.
Aye.
Ty.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Resolution passes. Next resolution, resolution twenty twenty five, nine transferred funds from general basic fund to capital projects fund. Can you give us amounts on that?
Um, so the amount for to go to the capital projects is the three hundred thirty five thousand two hundred and seventy five dollars.
Thank you. Any further?
That's for fifteen twenty four.
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve that resolution twenty five nine to transfer the funds from general to capital projects.
We have a motion in a second. Motion by Jean, second by Ty. Any further discussion? Hearing none, it is a resolution. Kyle.
Yep, aye.
Craig.
Yep, aye. Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Chair votes you up, aye.
Oh, my. I've made a motion for a year, so I'm sorry if I appear to be too anxious to make those.
And our last resolution, budget amendment, resolution twenty twenty five, ten, transfer funds from general basic to capital projects.
I'll make the motion to approve that resolution.
Second.
Motion by Kyle, second by Ty. Any further discussion?
What's that dollar amount?
Seventy thousand.
Okay.
Who did the second on that?
Ty.
All right.
Resolution. Kyle.
Aye.
Craig.
Aye.
Ty.
Aye.
Jean.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. You have a little bit of time to catch up, Terry?
Um, no, it's all right. I'll catch up eventually.
We do have our updated list of board assignments.
Thank you for sharing your assignment.
Fun job. Thank you for taking them.
We're still with public hell. I just didn't.
Yep, so West Central has Jean on it, and the IT committee has Jean, and then Craig is alternate.
Got a change up in your committee, Jake.
Enjoy it.
You get Jean.
Right, here we go.
There we go.
You're almost done completing the education of this board, Kyle's net.
Better bring a big word. I don't think the education ever ends.
No, I'm sure.
I'll do my best.
There's so much stuff with that stuff. Just overwhelming sometimes.
So with those changes to our board assignments, I entertain a motion.
I move we approve the board assignments as presented.
A motion by Craig.
Second.
And by Jean.
Do we want to list her as a assistant or associate or assistant back? Alternate, thank you, Jean.
You're welcome.
On the central Iowa juvenile.
That way if he can't.
We don't have one, but other 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 committee assignments, you know, for the other counties.
We would have to back up and.
I mean, I don't want, it ain't, it isn't a must, but I mean, she asked.
Well, if if you can't go, I can still listen in and.
Yeah, I I don't, I think we're fine if we're at, just let us know if you you have a something in and address it then.
I'll be glad to be an alternate. Informally.
Informally. So we do have a motion by Craig and a second by Jean for the board assignments. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Chair votes aye.
Did you ever want to write? Sure, he would, and you're more than welcome. I mean, you're always can.
He probably should have an alternate too. You can alternate for both.
Everybody's alternate.
Well, and honestly, that goes for all of us.
Yeah, if you ever had any of our.
Slash core pilot.
Interest.
Yeah, anybody wants to write it up or go to anybody, more than welcome to, just to see what it's all about.
Someday I might do that.
It gets overwhelming at times, but yeah, because a lot goes on at them detention centers.
It's interesting.
All right, it's always sounds interesting.
Take you for a tour of the place, get down in the tunnels.
I wouldn't mind doing that.
Yeah, maybe you would, but okay.
I don't know.
We can move on to holidays.
Do ones. What do we got for holiday?
Holiday.
I think the same. New Year's Day, Martin Luther King, Junior Day, President's Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving, and the day after, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. Same as this year.
What is Christmas this next year? Is that on Thursday?
Till the twenty-fourth of it. No, I'm just playing.
What, yes.
Is it a Wednesday, Thursday?
Christmas Day is Thursday.
The middle of the week holidays driving me back trip crazy.
Friday rather than Wednesday, Thursday. That one is claimed, which would be nice, but.
I know there's an option. Or Christmas Eve, and then have the day after off.
That's what we got.
To be honest, I mean, probably better today.
Well, it'd be nice. We, we would probably be doing their pocketbooks a great deal of service if they had to work on Black Friday.
Oh, Black Fridays in November though.
Oh, that is.
Day after.
The day after, ain't that when you go get all your bargains?
Well, it is, but Black Fridays are the day after Thanksgiving.
Cyber milk, I know what you're talking about though.
That is a holiday.
It is, on the list.
But it's then you're looking at the twenty fifth, sixth off.
I mean, that seems like a.
No, I'm just saying, I just saw it's, it's must be a holiday for somebody because I wasn't saying on there. Is it, is it Kwanzaa or Hanukkah or?
Well, it's Boxing Day in Canada.
Oh, there you go.
That's.
What a day to celebrate.
All the Trudels resigning, is it gonna be Fox?
Gonna be brown bagged.
No, it doesn't matter. I just, I just.
Typically, we get a half a day off on New Year's Eve or Christmas Eve day.
We used to.
We used to.
We used to, we get the whole day off.
We get the whole day off.
We take that lag.
It'd be a trade, it'd be up to, it'd be a trade. The whole day for a whole day.
But I guess either way, if we did do the twenty-fifth and then did the twenty-sixth off, if somebody had New Year's Eve planned, they get a half a day off of their vacation either.
Off time.
Off time.
Right, because a lot of people, if you didn't do, if you did the regular twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, like Kyle said, a lot of people probably will be taking that day off.
Anyway, it'd be a skeleton crew around here.
Yep, be a five-day weekend.
Which.
It's up to them though, that's their.
Right.
They build that time up to.
And as long as the department head, uh, has enough staff to take care of it, you know.
No, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day are fine.
I just shouldn't leave it at that.
Be a lot of confusion in there.
Right. And then they still can do what they want on the twenty-sixth.
With, uh, New, Christmas Eve, there's church services and things that people, you know, like to get home for, and I mean, they sure, they were four o'clock in the afternoon, so.
Cool. With the, good discussion with that?
The only other thing I would add is, you know, we've kind of approved that day off after we've already had the, after the day off. Wouldn't it be wrong to put January first, the twenty twenty-six on there as approvals?
Oh.
As a holiday.
It's always known, I guess.
I know, I hear it.
Yeah, always not, January first is not listed. For the twenty-five, it is, which has already happened. We took it without your approval. Sorry.
Well, we put it on this list.
That is not twenty.
Oh, I see. Yeah, no, I see what you're saying, absolutely.
That's all, I, I, I prove it either way, but I mean, they'll just officially have it on, misapproved, so it does get approved before we gave it off.
Which I, I get that.
Right.
Up to you. Is that your motion to add that and approve?
I'll make a motion to, just to make it official that way, that it's on there. Good catch, Kyle.
Yep.
Way to make things official.
We have a motion. Your second?
Second.
Second by Craig. Any further discussion on the holidays?
Get an actual name of this.
And then you are.
Oh, yeah.
That's not a resolution.
Hearing no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Holidays are approved.
Meeting.
Are they just gonna pay it on?
Meeting dates. Which we did go through.
Yep.
Um, Craig and I took a look at the dates, we kind of, with Terry.
No, interesting.
We tried to kind of make sure that our dates are, uh, remain line with claims. There were some months, I had five weeks in there that we decided to, the middle of the month, skip. And other things.
Perfect.
Uh, we have the last, you should have.
Yeah, January, so seventh, fourteen, twenty-first, and twenty-eighth. You're working the whole month, sorry. Fourth, eleventh, eighteenth, and twenty-fifth in February, again, the whole month. March, fourth, eleventh, eighteenth, and twenty-fifth. And then April has, must have five weeks. So it's the first, April Fool's Day, that'll be fun. April first, the eighth, and then we go to the twenty-second and twenty-ninth. So the fifteenth is a meal day.
Oh yeah, I'll need that day.
You'll need that day to get your stuff in. Uh, May sixth, thirteen, twenty, and twenty-seven. June, third, ten, seventeen, and twenty-four. July, um, first, eighth, twenty-second, and twenty-ninth. That one again has the fifteenth off. August, fifth, twelfth, nineteenth, and twenty-sixth. September, second, ninth. Then we go to the twenty-third and thirtieth. So, middle of the month. Um, October, seven, fourteen, twenty-one, and twenty-eight. November, fourth, eighteenth. Oh, and then, so fourth and the tenth, the tenth being a Monday because the eleventh is a holiday. So the tenth will be a Monday meeting, and then we go to the eighteenth and twenty-fifth in November. Got it?
Yep.
December, second, ninth, twenty-third, and thirty-first.
That switches.
That's a Wednesday for the end of the cash count to accomplish the end of year, so that'll be an afternoon meeting also.
Oh, that's nice looking at my calendar.
It is so nice. So much better than that other one. I don't know what I was thinking. Lost my brains. Anyway.
And with some of those, I, I would like to throw out there, you know, if we get a five-week month and then we don't have that meeting, like, let's say. Anyways, if somebody wanted to.
Like April the fifteenth.
April fifteenth. If, if there's a project going on with Paul or Second Day Roads, you know, we could always go do something besides the meeting.
Right, would be great.
You know, or if we wanted to go.
Be a road trip day or something.
Right, so we can always, I mean, just think of ideas and something pops up that, that we could utilize on one of those days. Great, if not.
What day in August, aren't we doing it?
All of them, you're doing it in August.
August, every.
One, two.
April fifteenth.
Okay. We're not testing that.
Maybe April and July are minus a day, and November, oh no.
This, April, July, September.
You need a magic number, something I can see from here.
Just put an asterisk on them two, they seem like making them amazing. I'm projecting we're gonna have a lot of rain and a lot of snow on the eighteenth and twenty-third of March.
Is that your ninety to a hundred day? From the fog days.
Craig, right in the middle of Canada.
You can still. I've been snowing out of this meeting once, really.
We'll see on.
You don't know this number?
It was last year about this time. Or right after Christmas, we had to have.
It's okay, on Monday night, I just come over to stay at Tanny's.
There you go.
Well, with those board meeting dates, entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the date as presented.
I have a motion by Jean, is there?
Second.
Any further discussion?
There was only two, we subtracted the.
There was.
Four.
Whatever month had five weeks.
April, July, September, and December.
September and December.
So.
I'll plan a vacation on those days.
So it's almost like getting a month off. So the sixteenth of December, we're not.
Four me.
Oh, for the whole year.
It's the middle of the month, then five weeks.
That's what I'm saying, the sixteen.
Yeah, yeah. Well, like I said, there's something that we wanted to do together on those months. Throw it out there, keep an eye open. So.
You have a Christmas dinner on the second team. Eat for lunch.
You're cooking? Oh.
I'll throw it out there to the board right now, but the one thing I'd like to do is August of twenty twenty-five, the new middle school or Broadway Elementary will be open. I would like to tour that before they open.
But.
Oh, yeah.
So.
My bet is it won't be done.
So.
You don't think it'll be done?
Come on. Come on. So, I guess no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jean Bates are approved.
Hopefully it ain't as bad as the Woodbury, kind of jail.
Number eleven. Resolution to approve appointment of deputies to the auditor.
Yep.
What?
So.
Mary, Amy, Michelle, and Megan.
Have, do we do that every year?
Well, um, I usually do it, and I, I did it four years ago when I was elected.
So you do it every four years, um, when you start a new term?
I usually give you something. I don't usually always do it this way, but this is what I did last, or four years ago, sorry, four years ago when I was re-elected, so I figured I would do it again because I have new, new names on there from four years ago, so.
I mean, they'll.
And they're all hitting anniversaries too.
Don't they? I guess I get that status, just when we approve, you know, when it comes across as far as.
Has to be a resolution, has to be a resolution. Because in Iowa code, each appointment shall be adopted by resolution recorded in the minutes of the board.
Right, but I mean, they've been appointed years ago.
We should have had a resolution years ago.
They were.
They were.
Right, they, they were, they, they are appointed. They were appointed, they are appointed. I'm just asking.
There's new names since the appointment four years ago.
Michelle and Megan are new to my office since my last resolution. I mean, when they were hired.
Right, when they were hired.
I gave them.
The status.
I think, well, I don't know if I did, well, I don't remember. Anyway, don't remember.
I'm just saying, it seems redundant. It seems to me that they would have already been approved once they get, once they get hired.
They are deputies.
Yeah.
I must have done it at some point to this ta, to this board. It might have been right away. They're both second deputies. One's accounts payable.
We're not changing their status.
No, 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 it's just a clarification of what their status is.
Right.
If we were being technical, I think that when they are hired, it should be by resolution that they're deputies, is if you read the, the code. And I'm not, you know, we can't go back and fix anything, but I think that's the way it should actually be. When somebody new is hired and they're appointed as a deputy, it should be a resolution.
Would that be though?
That's the way I read it.
Just thinking out loud. When we have, um, new hires come on and it comes across for us to sign, and it says that they're deputies at that time and we sign it, even though we didn't.
Has to be a resolution.
Has to be a resolution.
Each appointment shall, it's not may, or again, it says shall be adopted by a resolution recorded in the minutes of the board.
I'm just saying, you know, it comes around and we sign it as we're hired, but if it says deputy at that time, back then, we not do it a resolution and instead thinking that that was suffice.
We can't, like we say, we can't go backwards, but, uh, and we're not planning on going backwards, that's not the point of the conversation. The point of the conversation is that by Iowa code, they say that each appointment, you know, that we can't do a group. Uh, so I think going forward, as new deputies get hired, we should by resolution and have it in the minutes that we've appointed a new deputy in Crawford County. If you read the.
I got a question about this.
Can I get a copy?
Auditor, treasurer, recorder, sheriff. County attorney. May each appoint with approval of the board or one or more deputies, assistants, or clerks for whose acts the principal officer is responsible. The number of duties assist, the number of deputies assisting. So, does that mean that basically these three departments and the attorney can appoint them and the sheriffs are all of the same type of thing?
Well, I have, I have an attorney look at it. Uh.
Well, I'm not ready to, I'm not ready to approve this yet, then. Because, I mean, if we do this, I don't remember ever doing a, a resolution like this.
I don't ever, but I've only been doing it four years, so.
Well.
You've done it four years ago then.
Four years ago, I was in a fog on my first day of work.
I get that, I get that.
Not gonna lie, that was a disastrous day for me.
Go on, move on then.
No, I'm just curious, if we don't. What, I mean, like you said, we're not gonna go backwards.
Which they already are deputies today.
Deputies today. We're not gonna change anything by not doing it, taking no action today, we're not gonna, the pay's not gonna change.
Definitely not gonna change anything.
Right. So I mean, my research is a little different, it's not gonna change anything, and we're not gonna.
I'm only saying going forward.
I mean, I don't.
Yeah, but that, but reading this code now, I mean, that doesn't just count these three offices. I mean, because there's also the attorney who's always said that he doesn't have the ability to do that. When, maybe he does.
Hell.
And the sheriff's department.
That's the one that maybe concerns me more because right now there's no unions and them guys that were all under a union are not, they're kind of in limbo because of that spreadsheet you handed out the other day. We can all put them at eighty percent of his pay and that would be a huge, huge.
Okay, you're tracking me. So, that's why I said, we better do a little bit, get a little smarter on this before we sign hand like that.
Lord, I'm, I'm tracking you for the same fact that until.
This resolution doesn't do any of that.
Right. I mean.
I'm confused. I'm trying to do the right thing.
You're doing the right thing.
Yes.
But if he would bring his in, then it really.
Well, let's, let's stay on track that this is, we can adjust the deputy status either today in Rattford to point who they already are.
How many times we, here we are sitting here on, on every budget season, we sit here, well, this is what this county's getting. So, I mean, we're always doing this share and share alike. You know, or we gotta do what everybody else is doing, which I'm not in favor of that either, but, uh, I mean, that's the only reason I'm saying is if we do this, and then Sherry comes in here and say, well, how, how come we ain't doing mine that way, or Colin comes in here and says, how come we aren't doing mine that way? Or Roger DeBoo, who's already asking for a twelve percent pay raise to begin with.
Twelve thousand.
And if what happens, if he can say, okay, Brent's eighty-five percent and everybody else is eighty percent.
This has nothing to do with rate of pay.
It could have.
It does, Craig. It gives them the authority without, without us to set that pay.
They're, the people are already classified or named or already have these titles. We're not changing their titles. For, and it seems like to me that Terry's bringing it because she was newly elected. And as a newly elected official, I just want to make sure that these people are still in the same category as they were be prior to my election. That's what it seems like to me, that Terry is saying. And to me, I mean, it, it seems redundant because we've already approved them.
Have we?
Prior, yeah.
I want to see them minutes.
Well, whenever they were hired at that level, that comes before and everybody, our signatures are on the back of every time that we have that.
That's not a resolution which says that that's the way we have to do it. So I think that we're, this is housekeeping a little bit. Because I think we've not been doing it exactly correctly.
I think we have been doing it.
What was our resolution that appointed them deputies? Not trying, don't take your department out of this. This is not about.
But I can't. My department's in it. I actually prepared a resolution to do this properly. And now I'm being scrutinized over it.
No, you're not. No, it's, it's the whole picture of, no, no.
Well, actually, I'm scrutinizing Iowa code and all the other departments.
By doing nothing isn't gonna take away their deputy status at this point.
No, no.
So.
Exactly.
So moving forward, if we're ever gonna go down that road, now this is a whole different bucket.
Whole different bucket.
If you wanted to dictate deputies later on, that's something different compared to what Terry wrote for us today.
Well, I think, I don't, I, I think you're missing my point.
Go ahead.
I'll just vote my position.
I think I'm missing your point too, Ty, I guess.
Yeah, I think you are because like I said, they establish, we no longer have control of their pay once, once we hand that deputy status over.
They already have.
We only have control over the.
Ty, they already have that status.
I, I, I think you're still missing my point. I said the sheriff's office and the dep, and, and the county.
We're not dealing with the sheriff's office right now. We're dealing with what was, is before us. That's just the county auditor bringing this.
And then I said, when was the last time that we did this? Maybe we need to reevaluate the whole damn thing because otherwise the whole damn courthouse is gonna be a deputy.
Well, I.
I'm not saying this resolution makes them, but they're gonna walk in here next week and say, I want to make all my guys deputies. I'd like to prepare that resolution. And he knows how to write them better than I do. You see what I'm getting at?
Yeah, I think you're just missing the point. I guess you're missing what, if, if they would have do that, then we would have the authority to either approve or not approve. This is not changing the status of anybody. If somebody would bring that forward, because it does say in, in, in Iowa code that, uh, the number of deputies assistants and clerks for each office shall be determined by the board. So that's us. We get it determined. There you go. We do.
Yeah.
And so would she, so each, if the sheriff.
So we're debating.
If the sheriff, reporter and treasurer would bring that to us at that point in time, we could.
But they never have. And so we need to set, decide if we're gonna follow code or not.
But we've always, always, we've always, I, I guess, I've only been here a couple of years, but it seems like that when they bring the budget and it has the salary and it has the, um, name and the position and the amount of money that they're making and we approve that, that's.
Not a resolution.
That's done.
Is it a resolution, appointing and adding more?
You mean, is it a resolution where each of our names were called that we had to vote? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
I don't know.
I don't think so.
You're, you just say, I don't think so.
Well, let's go back, let's go back a year or two.
This is not about your office. It's about.
Let's go back a year or two.
It's not.
When across over here, we've got all these deputies and she was maneuvering things around over there and pays were getting readjusted over in that department over there. And we had no say on how that was going. So, and that's affecting the budget. You see what I'm saying? Them are the kind of things that, because this was on here, I was looking, I was looking some of that up, but. All right, we need to evaluate that because now I'm seeing where we're actually supposed to appoint these deputies or verify them or whatever you want to call it. All right, resolution, vote to a resolution. So we wouldn't be doing this if, if it wasn't required of us to. And, and why, for what other reason other than our budget, would we be saying yes or no? I mean, I'm not trying to run our department, but for, to have zero control after we vote, I mean, this is what we've argued about for a couple of years is once we do the budget, we have no control over everything, anything. I mean, what we give them is what we give them and, and she went and adjusted her stuff, used mail money or whatever. I mean, that was the discussion. I don't remember how that went. But to, to give some promotions to people that were gonna leave. Is that the recorder's office? Okay, well, all right, sorry, Sherry. And the, uh, but that's my point is we, we've had these discussions. So I mean, that's where, I, I, that's why I just want to make sure that we're, since this is on there, I looked up the code, I got the code to look at and is that how we want to do this going forward? All right, and we even discussed it last year. Are we supposed to be in charge of how many deputies are in an office? So that we have better ability to ensure that this year's budget stays close to what we've already done or just go ahead and.
I mean, it just, it just seems like, I guess, you want to make sure that it's a revol, resolution. Terry brings us a resolution and says we're naming these people at the exact same capacity that they are currently at. So we would be meeting your expectation by making it a resolution. We would not be changing anybody's pay because they're all would be titled the exact same title that they have now. Why, we should just approve what Terry brings and just do it on a, on a, whatever, on a department head by department head basis as they come before us and present the resolution. If we want a resolution and you say that it has to be a resolution, by Iowa code it wants to be a resolution and Terry brings us a resolution and we have a problem with it. Doesn't make any sense.
I have a problem with the number of deputies in each office. That's my issue is you're, we're, we're reestablishing this.
That's just for her office. This has nothing to do with any other office in this courthouse. So you just Terry's office. You want to change the number of deputies that Terry has?
Potentially I do.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying, but we don't have, we aren't having a discussion about that.
We certainly can.
I tried to.
Just gonna throw this out in weeds, you know, we still haven't had to pass it by resolution. You brought up a point, it was in the budget. Right. We proved line item by line item. How's a budget get passed by resolution? So in, in, in a roundabout way, we trying to, did we pass it by resolution?
No, I don't think that's accurate.
I don't know. I don't know.
That's kind of why.
You could argue that it's under the umbrella of a resolution.
I don't know. I'm just throwing it up.
I thought that, exact same point.
I think the bigger discussion down the road is that if we want to have the deputy discussion per office, that it all needs to be done at one time.
I guess my biggest fear was was this, this section of this budget, this that we got passed out, yes, last week.
It is the bigger discussion of.
That, that adds up to big money.
Yes, it does. It does. And I think.
That's what got me thinking about this whole deal.
Well.
And I'm not saying, I'm not saying we, you're not wrong by all the other parts of it. It's just, that's what got me really thinking, but it's like, holy cow.
Well, that's exactly what I'm trying to bring up here. I mean, how fiscally responsible are we being with our budget as this board, if we basically relinquish and control over eighty percent of the payroll budget in the building?
What piqued my attention with this particular, and this is if, if a new person gets hired would be the time that we should as the board, whatever, whoever's sitting as the board at that time. Would need to approve that appointment each time a new deputy is hired and that's when you make that adjustment.
Yeah, I'm not saying that we have to go back and.
No, nobody's saying that and nobody's trying to micromanage.
But I'm trying to say we need to make sure we're looking at this because now you, you, you basically are, are adding the sheriff's department. You're, the way that code reads.
So, so.
Colin's department.
Kind of part of it would be.
Adding them to what?
To be deputy status.
Deputy status.
That has to be approved by us.
But it hasn't been in the past.
According to Iowa code, it should, it's, it's done by us.
But when was the last time there was a resolution appointing a new deputy?
I don't know.
Four years ago.
Four years. Four years ago.
No, you had people that, that were hired since then and we were not, we did not approve that deputy hire.
So.
You know.
Not by resolution, but you approved the hire.
Right. We approved the hire and.
Okay.
The status was on there.
Status was in the budget like Kyle says, which was approved by resolution. And, and Terry, I guess, just, uh, seemed like to me that just to make sure everything is co-centric in the way it should be, she brings it to us from her department and just says, here, we can approve by resolution these people at that status.
You gotta do what you gotta do. Everybody's gotta vote at this table.
We don't even have a motion.
I, I just think we should be cautious, nothing personal, no, just to make sure that we are fixing what we think maybe we haven't done correctly in the past. Not, not this board necessarily.
Throw it out there, the, the issue is.
All boards.
The deputy status of, of salaries. I mean, it's, it's when we say that we budget a three or four or five percent raise and then they bump up a couple of points of deputy status and they get a six or seven or eight percent raise. That's what you guys are saying is the issue.
There you go.
To control it, you're just saying let's get rid of deputies.
Never done that.
No.
I have never done that.
No.
Well, your integrity has been great.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I throw it on that cover.
Uh, Terry, we know that. It's, it's a bigger picture.
You do you, you do you.
I will make a motion to approve resolution two oh two five dash seven, appointment of deputies to the auditor.
I have a motion by Craig. Very second.
I will second it to continue the discussion.
Motion in second.
I would like a little more time to research the actual meaning of the section three three one point nine oh three, appointment of deputies assistants and clerks. Uh, and the way that that's written, I'd like an opportunity to discuss it with our attorney to see if we're doing it correctly or not. It just, I, I just wanted.
At this point, I think we have a motion in a second, so.
That's my.
Now we're in discussion. This is actually how it's, you should have made the motion in discussion before, or the second before you, if we want to get by rights.
Yeah, you're right.
But the, uh, here's my problem. Every time we do a pay raise, that's in perpetuity from that day forward. Uh, let's say Terry's doesn't, doesn't do it again in four years. All right, you got a whole new auditor, you're risking giving everybody eighty percent, okay? And then that's, they're in perpetuity and they've done the deputy thing. Will they do it? I don't know. Hopefully not. Hopefully they're responsible to taxpayers like she's been, but we have no guarantee of that. And we real, we eliminate any control this board has with future budgets by doing that. This year they want to give themselves a nice bump as officers to catch them up to counties that we really don't, we're, we're doing research, Kyle, thank you for what you've done. We're doing the research to see, uh, the number of people in offices, the number, you know, the poverty rate of them counties, what's their tax income, all them things. We're trying to figure out stuff to see what, instead of just saying population is how we're gonna say, okay, these counties are forty-six and forty-seven and, or we're forty-seven and they're forty-eight, forty, you see what I'm saying? So we're gonna compare ourselves to that and that's where we should be paying people. I mean, that's, that's arbitrary and that's as bad as the back to blue where we're saying, okay, you're paying the same as the, as the chief of police in, in Johnson or wherever the hell we did that last time that was creating so much confusion with the back to blue bill. I mean, all you end up doing is that leapfrog thing, you know, because if, if we paid them up to where number forty-seven is this year, next year they're gonna, they get a raise, so we gotta bump it up again and, and it, it's, it's continuous. And then if it's all them deputies in there automatically get a percentage of that pay as opposed to a negotiated salary like should probably be done in my opinion, you can't, you, you have no control. They, they go up automatic. So, so what if nobody gets their, their percentage moved this year? It probably will next year. And they're, they're already moved up and then we move them up again. So you look at that big bump there. So that bump catches up to them, just don't happen this year. You see my point?
I see your point, Ty, but to me you approach that from the budget process.
Yeah.
That's when the, is, that's when it's determined or that's when you handle it, that's when you deal with it, is in the budgeting process. What we have before us today is just a, a resolution naming people to the same office that they already have. We're not changing deputy status for anybody. It's the exact same status that they were at. And so I don't know, it just seems like we're talking about stuff that is, it's pretty.
It's because they're all deputies that we have this.
What we have before us today is that resolution is all that that is. It has nothing to do with deputy status in the sheriff's department, deputy status in the treasurer's department, how much they're making eighty, eighty-five percent and has nothing to do with that. Nothing.
Yeah, it does.
No, it doesn't.
If you make them a deputy, they.
They already are though. We're not changing the status of anybody in the auditor's office.
Then why in the hell's the resolution on there?
Well, because to, according to, to Gene, it has to be in a resolution because that's what she has been griping about that the state law says.
I have not been griping about anything.
Hey, let's bring it out a little bit.
What have I, have I?
Well, that's what you have been saying is that it needs to be in a resolution. Terry is bringing it to us in the resolution and it seems like we have a problem.
Well, who's not a deputy in there that needs to be a resolution?
It doesn't need to be done then. If it's been done, if, if it's already appointed, why are we doing it? Why are we?
Well, because you said it hasn't been done.
When did I say it?
You, you said that you needed time to look back to see if it's actually done by resolution because you weren't sure. So now she's bringing it to us, so it could be determined by a resolution.
I said it today. So.
Okay.
So.
Okay, I guess there's a motion. We'll see where, where a motion go, where, where, where it ends up. It seems like you guys are seeing more into this than what needs to be, but whatever.
So that a call to question.
Yeah, you can ask a motion to call the question. That needs to be affirmed in second. Call the question itself unless you want to make that a rules amendment. But I think you can bring it up because you're the chair. Bring it to the vote.
Well, you're gonna, I don't know, there's. Seems to me like there's, there's way too much. I, 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 I agree with you. It seems like there's, we're just trying to reassure, re-solidify what's already done. We're not gonna go back, we're gonna take deputy status away from people.
We're not adding, we're not taking away.
The discussion I was understanding that we're not gonna do that, but if we need time to look back and see if it's been done, I think we should.
Asking for time. That's all I'm asking for.
I think we should. If that's, if we do it, I think we just.
No.
Table this for a week and let's get it done. So there's no.
No griping. I just wanted to have a chance.
How many times we've either at this board been, we have, we have no control over payroll.
There's no question about it that Terry's done this. Let's just solidify that it's been done and it's over with. I think it's it's been done through, through the budget process, one way or another. We've solidified it. I, but, but let's just. I mean, we've got a motion in a second on the board.
Any further discussion? This is a resolution.
No.
I'm Gene. Kyle.
Aye.
Craig?
Aye.
Chair of time. I think that's some of the, a further discussion on later.
Voted on, wise point.
Okay, move on to number twelve. Prove appointments to commission to assess damages. It looks like those two vacancies in the, the one, there's, was a vacancy in the farmer committee. Phil Strachey has accepted that and city property owners, Dwayne Zink is filling that position. So all twenty-eight, seven times four are filled. Go down.
So who are, so we have two new ones?
Phil Strachey and Dwayne Zink.
And we both fit the needed spots for those positions.
This woman up here, right here.
I'm.
Got it?
Yep.
I'm through my discussion with Phil. I actually read up on it and it's and the, if a, a situation arises, the judge will be called and pick from each category of those are incident and then they'll be able to accept or withdraw. There's a, there's a situ, I mean, if there's conflict of interest, they can decline. So that's why there's seven for each si, each position. So in a kind of unique situation. Phil asked me one that was actually established, why this, one that got established and I could not find that. I said, well, I'm, I'm, my assumption would be when the interstate system was being put in. Cause that would have been the first big.
Turn nine and hour gunner.
Private, like on public use project that I would think.
So we have a motion to approve these two new appointments?
Well.
It's approving the whole list, but yeah, no, it's okay.
I'll make that motion to approve the, uh, board if it was approved, assess damages, well.
We have a motion by Gene, second by Craig. All in favor, say aye.
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 I.
Chair of time.
When's the last time that board met?
I don't know.
Never, never known it to.
We thought with the, uh, pipeline coming through that we should have, it had all up to date, so it's some people that.
I mean, it's the greatest chance of a meeting.
Yep. They'd been deceased and whatnot that were on there, so we updated it.
I do. I don't know if any imminent domain have ever been, or for sale.
Okay, let's move on to thirteen, approve appointments to board of adjustments.
Um, to reappoint Doug Grono. He, uh, uh, offered an application, so.
I'll make a motion to approve that appointment of Doug Grono to the board of adjustments.
Motion by Kyle.
Yep.
Second by Craig. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Chair of time. Fourteen, prove appointment to L E C board of operations, law enforcement.
And that's reappointment of Dwayne Zink. That's who served the board since that. Well, since the L E C board was kind of reestablished. Can't even remember when it was to be honest, but was it in the last ten years or so?
Yeah.
Was it kinda?
Yeah.
Was it?
Ah.
Look, I'm guessing right.
And so if I read this right, we have one to appoint, correct?
Correct.
Dwayne, yep. We have a motion for the appointment.
Done.
Motion by Craig, is there a second?
Yep, second.
Second by Kyle. Any further discussion? Hearing it in all, favorite say aye.
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 Chair of time. And fifteen, approve appointments to Reagan twelve, Cobb Policy Council.
And that is a reappointment of Sarah Carlson and Linda Mulbauer. I will abstain.
I will abstain. Because I'm raising my mind on your phone.
So moved?
A motion by Craig.
Second.
Second by Jean. All in favor, say aye.
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 Are motion to these. Sixteen. Approve appointment of zoning administrator. And there are no names represented for the administrator or the commission.
What does that mean?
I mean, Seth does not want to do it, and he has no suggestions for the commission.
Okay. Okay.
So there won't be any motion on the next two.
Um, hum.
What does the county do if it doesn't have a zoning administrator?
Well, remember, we were thinking about having Regent Twelve help.
They don't want us.
And we thought about, I went and talked to Kenny Call, the C P, you know, with the enlisted. And, you know, that's just not as convenient as coming into the courthouse and all wanting to talk about zoning from down the street. So then we kind of thought about doing it in the engineer's office.
Which has happened.
Yep.
Regent Twelve's thing was, they said, you know, we're a government toolbox. We're not there to do the job itself. We will assist somebody in it. Really don't want to open up a door to have all of our counties start coming to them for, hey, I can't fit this spot, you have to less block.
I respect. Like the question, when the conference board made the hiring, was that implied? It was not discussed, as far as I remember.
It wasn't discussed, and he gets that extra five thousand dollars to do that, so that's.
Right, but I just, I mean. It should have been addressed at that point in time.
It would have been added to the.
Make it part of the job description, this is what you do.
But for all we know, Iowa code requires that we have a special one. Have we ever looked into how we ended up having that not be part of that?
Well, I'm sure it just was over. How everything happens in these small counties, they're just, you want to do that, yep, I'll do it, and then it just rolls along.
Again, it's just.
Until somebody retires, it passes on, and it's just like.
Kicking the can down the road, because it's the way we've always done it.
No, you know.
And now here we are.
Yep.
Now here we are. Are you looking that up, Craig?
I didn't remember.
I'm counting on that.
Going on.
Sure.
I was looking it up. I don't think it has any specific place that I've seen even where conservation and zoning were together, so.
We, we, we commissioned zoning, been together. Was zoning, weed commission? Weed commission and zoning. I mean, it's a wide array across the county.
Jean, how do you like to do IT and zoning?
I'm good, man.
Pays five thousand dollars?
It pays five thousand dollars.
I've got it up on my plate as is.
Oh. Hey, is that why you're here? I make a motion that way you're going to.
Don't do me.
Don't you dare?
We're going to take a five-minute recess.
Okay, so we can't discuss it.
Looking why you guys research, paper five-minute recess.
Anybody need the restroom?
Got the habit of not doing that, so.
Counties in Iowa are required to have a zoning administrator.
I figured that.
It's too bad, because it's been a good fit, right where it's had an assessor's office.
Have we asked anybody else in that office if they would want to step up and just take it?
I haven't personally, no. That makes sense.
I.
It'd be one of the.
From what Seth had told me, is that they're all busy, learning their positions and getting their feet wet. And he thought nobody in his office, I don't think he wanted to have anybody else do that, have that responsibility, and have to be on you.
Well, at one point in time, there was talk, which probably we just haven't seen anything about Terry.
What about Sarah's office? I mean, I'm not saying that they don't have anything to do. I'm just saying that what about Sarah's office? They may be taxed out, too, but we never think about them. They're kind of quiet over there.
We thought Mary Iton was a good fit, but she would be a good fit.
Never asked them.
Somebody in there might think five thousand dollars sounds.
I mean, how many?
I don't want to keep that in the courthouse, is what I want to do.
How many, yeah, how many contacts a year are made with that, you know, alone, I don't know.
I did ask Seth.
What was the answer?
Well, I have to, I'm sure I wrote it down somewhere. I think in a year. And there are different amounts of research that are needed to be done. Some take five minutes, some take thirty minutes, but none of them, you know, just depending on. They might have to actually drive out and look at it if they can't. But a lot of them, I'm going to say the number was like fifty, but most of them just take five minutes that they can take that.
There's got to be a little training, so.
I know, I share that. Why can't you guys remember what I said?
People come to get their building, and you know they're building.
Yeah, 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 we would never.
You don't have to go look for it. You already got proof that they're building.
But there are some situations, and I think one of the examples was when somebody was trying to build something on three and a half acres, and it needed to be five, and they had to make sure that it, you know, where they have it measured out for the deal.
There you go. Back recess is over. Sorry.
That's all right. That was a short recess.
With zoning, Terry.
Yeah.
Ty brought up Sarah's office. We haven't asked her. I know one time we talked about Mary. I've had absolute, I don't know, I'll have to ask her.
I mean, I'm just, that's all I was doing, is we never really think about them more than because they're quiet, don't stir up.
I will go talk to them after the meeting, if that's all right, and bring this back next week. Will that be okay?
I'm just thinking about the zoning administrator in charge of, like, when the time the concrete plant wanted to build out there where.
Yeah.
Where Hipper's got, they had to rezone that, or attempted to rezone that.
And they had to have a public hearing.
In regard to that.
Is that where it was, where it's.
That property that they're going to rent on, right there, that flat, right below the bridge.
Mm-hmm.
And then the folks that lived on Twelve Street, that was going to be.
And I think the commission, they have to be, live in the unincorporated areas.
I would think so, in our behalf.
I looked at it one time, and still I don't.
So in that office, they'd have to live in the incorporated?
Not the administrator, the commission.
The commission itself.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, not the administrator.
For what we were, yeah.
So to stay on task, appointment of zoning administration, we have nobody at this point.
Right.
No action to take. You're going to talk to Sarah.
I will.
You're going to talk to Mary. Keep her eyes open, her thoughts, think about that.
And then, I guess then specifically, could it just be anybody in your office, or anybody in Sarah's office that would be willing to take that on, right? It doesn't have to be just Mary specifically, Sarah's.
I think if you do it that way, though, you still got to have the approval department in, because it's obviously going to interrupt their daytime.
Without a doubt. Without a doubt.
That's why I said Sarah in particular.
I'm saying, yeah, part of that.
Department, then. Sorry.
That's fine. The other part of that is if that appointed person is on vacation or out sick or something, you know, what do we do? If somebody needs it, and that particular person that we appointed, and I think the other part of it is that your staff, if you're getting the five thousand dollars as the administrator, and you're gone and they do your job, I don't know if that's, that's.
But to that point, I don't know, Kyle, in the past, when Wayne was doing his own, I don't remember any of his staff doing that.
I have no idea how he handled it.
I thought he took the five thousand, just divided it up, people amongst.
I never heard that.
I don't know. I don't know how he handled it.
I think it got paid to him directly.
It got paid to him directly, but when I asked Seth how that worked, he said, well, Dwayne always treated this really well.
So how he handled it, other than that, I have no idea.
No secrets given, no how that handled. It just, and I think that maybe if you took a zoning.
Doesn't it?
Application, that possibly he'd let you go home early or something.
Because I mean, just from the public's perspective, to me, it needs to stay in the courthouse.
I agree.
It has to be in the courthouse, because when you're just the person in the public, and you're like, okay, zoning, I better ask about that. I'm sure there's somebody at the courthouse.
That's exactly right.
Maybe to go to. You would assume that would be the assessor's office.
You would assume.
But if it's not going to be the assessor's office, and if it needs to be at least someone in this building.
It does.
Would be nice.
There's nothing to do today with it. You have nobody. All right.
Well, I think if you make, in the assessor's office, I don't think we got the right to go down there and tell him.
We don't.
So it's got to be that commission.
We cannot assign other jobs to the assessor.
Conference board's got to.
Conference board would have to.
They'd have to direct him to do it or not to do it.
But I think even the conference board, if I remember correctly in my research, we cannot assign any other jobs to the assessor other than what the state has as its job description.
According to that, you can't tell them that they have to be.
I don't think the conference board even has.
But I mean, the conference board shouldn't even have, I don't know.
I think.
What I would think.
You're supposed to do things that aren't.
Hypothetically, I would think that in the next month or so, when they come on, raise, they could say, you know, there's this string attached, a little bit of give and take, you know?
I would say.
Not telling him he has to take it on, but there's suggestion.
We'll take that.
Let's move on. Talk to Sarah.
I will.
Talk to Mary.
I will.
I don't know if we want to put it on the agenda right, right away. I mean, let's.
Oh, wait.
We can discuss that, that we find information, that's old business. Let's do move on to seventeen. Approve appointment of zoning commissions, we talk about this. Terry, is, do you have a list? What are the vacancies or? I don't, nothing was invited to me.
Nothing.
I think, was it Wayne Newman, maybe that?
Yeah, I think Wayne Newman got all.
I think his term expired and didn't. Free up, or he doesn't live in the unincorporated area of the county either. But anyway. So we have nobody at this time until that.
Right.
I just.
One person.
Just one person. I can get you a list.
They need to live in the incorporated city.
We'll email it, and I'll find those guidelines and figure that out. Let you know what. So no action taken on that item either, until we get a list of names. Okay, and let's move on down the line, and discussion and take action of Law Enforcement Center Operation Committee, Addendum A. And that's my Ron here.
That's right.
Ron, thank you for patiently waiting for us. I do have a couple of copies. I don't know if you brought a couple of copies, but.
I brought the originals, the ones you concerned. Let me see one of them.
Oh, here it is, the.
That I did forget.
That's okay.
All right, one of the duties of the L S D Operations Committee is to meet annually and come up with the operating expenses and the property insurance expenses, so that they can be shared equally with the city of Dennis.
Who serves on that committee?
I am appointed by the four. The sheriff is an automatic member. The chief of police is an automatic member. You appointed Dwayne, and the fire chief is the city's appointee.
Okay.
So it's a five-member board.
Okay.
Normally, we only meet annually. There have been a couple of times last year, we met twice. I forget now, there was something going on that we met for. But at any rate, we are required to, under the twenty-eighty agreement, to meet annually and look at these numbers. Dwayne has, as he has done in the past, and working with the, I think Terry's office is able to pull some of these numbers for us, so that we've got the numbers for the operating expenses and the property insurance. So I don't know what got sent out to the board, but there was a copy that shows last year's addendum with the numbers that were struck through and the new numbers for this year. So last year, and this is the same formula, all we ever change on the addendum are the dates and the amounts. Everything else stays, as far as the verbiage goes, stays the same. Last year, the average cost per month was three thousand seven hundred and forty-seven and seventy-five cents. Believe it or not, not very expensive, dropped to two thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
It dropped a thousand bucks a month.
It dropped almost a thousand dollars a month, which is hard to believe.
Why are you supposed to add it?
It could be your zoning administrator for free.
Yeah. So at any rate, then that drops the city's share from five hundred and twenty-four, I'm sorry, from three, two hundred and sixty-two dollars a month to a hundred and ninety-five oh nine a month. And then the property insurance, because we all knew this was going to go up, as is everybody's, it went from forty-eight thirteen to sixty-two forty-four. And so the amount owed by the city for that is one, is twenty-five percent of that number, which is fifteen sixty-one. And so what I have are two copies of the resolution, or the addendum, I'm sorry. They need to be approved by the board and then signed by its chairperson. And then the city council is meeting this evening, and the same thing will be presented to the city council for their signatures. And then once they have two signed, each person will get a signed copy, or each body will get a signed copy.
So the expenses are just split fifty-fifty?
No, there's actually a formula that was developed in the very first year.
That's in the twenty-eighty agreement.
Yeah, and it's how much of the, how much of the LE, or how much of the Law Enforcement Center does the police department occupy. And so that's how they came up with, and of course, there was no way to separate out the operating expenses for just the L E C from the courthouse, because it's all built together. So we took the entire courthouse, then we shrunk it down to, okay, so how much of that thing is police department, and that came out to, I think, fourteen percent?
Yeah.
Yep, fourteen percent. And then on the property insurance, that's different, because that building itself has its own property insurance policy, it's not part. And that raised that percentage up to twenty-five percent of the total building is occupied by the police department.
Ron, for everybody, this is something we review every year at this time, so we're all on the same page.
Yes, it, we normally meet in November. We were discussing telephone systems and waiting for bids to come in on that. So we didn't meet until December, and that's why it's now appearing in January. We try to do it during your budget year, so that you know how much money you're going to take in or what's changing. And, but yes, this is an annual thing that we do.
So that's always had its own insurance? That building is always?
I don't know if it's always.
Yeah, I don't know if it's always.
I think it.
But they're just able to.
But the county, up until the board was created, the county just paid it all.
Okay.
County paid all the operating expenses, the county paid all the insurance, and the police department just occupied their space. And then when they decided to resurrect the board, they said, okay, so we, you know, one of the reasons of resurrecting the board is so that the city has some skin in the game.
Okay.
And so let's come up with a formula, and this is the formula that was originally approved.
I think it's been fair over the years.
I think so.
Do you think it seems to work? You've been there since day one?
Yeah.
We have a motion to approve the Law Enforcement Center Operation Committee, Addendum A. So moved?
I'll second.
Craig, second by Jean. Any further discussion?
Don't fix things up.
All questions.
Hearing none. Not a resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair will tie. Right. I'm going to stamp only one, because one is ours, but there are two fronts for you to sign. Yeah, please. I put a date, today's date, right above where you're signing.
When he gives it to me, he just gives it to me as the utilities. He doesn't give it to me by, broken out, like gas or electric. Or washing.
That is curious.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's the first time. Yeah, it's the first time, I think, I saw it go down in Denver.
Just lucky.
And nothing's in my goodness, but we're waiting for that to be signed. Just a reminder that the city did do a resolution, established once a year, and the position, the person, and the amount, and that's how they were, we wanted to address your concern. Just a thought. I don't know if you guys can, but an interesting conversation.
Appreciate that.
They all are. Just come to sit once a year.
Sometimes they may be coming again.
You're welcome, anytime. And it's always good.
Let's, Terry, you ready to move on to our crime policy renewal, E M C insurance?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, thanks for what you do.
Yep, it's a renewal of our crime policy. It covers employee theft, it covers.
So we have a policy that says that crime is bad or we're not in favor.
We encourage it.
Right.
We are against crime.
Forgery, those kind of things.
And does it give?
And covers the tre, the treasurer, that's a special kind of thing, sorry to interrupt.
That's fine.
And that's probably directed by our insurance company, I would say, that they say you have to have a policy then.
Not very many companies do this kind of thing, so it's, it has, it was a challenge for a while to get it, but we got it through T A Ms. When they, yeah.
So they get updated or?
Yeah, he ripped Cole Gossler is the person that usually contacts me and.
Cole?
Cole, the Cole Gossler. Stacy Gallup's son.
Another standard procedure for the beginning of the year.
It is, it is. The coverage usually, I believe it's right around twelve hundred to fifteen hundred dollars is the cost of it, if I remember right. It is relative.
I believe we approved the crime policy renewal.
I have a motion.
I'll second, I have a question.
Jean, a second, um how's your going to discussion?
How much does that cover for, like, the treasurer who handles a lot of money?
I don't know if this form says that, does it say?
Just a question to, not that maybe the.
We're reading up on this, it's not really.
I mean, the limit of insurance for theft is three hundred thousand.
Oh, maybe that's the answer.
Yeah.
That might be it.
And that's to list twenty-three cardholders, debit credit cardholders.
So it includes fraud if they would charge a bunch of personal stuff on.
Insurance, thousand fifty or credit cards.
Boy, that's.
That's not much, yeah.
Three thousand.
Yeah.
Theft, employee theft, three thousand, forgery and altercation. Three thousand. We do have, we do have cyber insurance, right? We have different policies.
That's a good question, I T director.
I believe, yes, um.
We do have a different policy for that.
Yes, it's through I C A P. Um, I, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, I know generally. To cover it.
Do you want to see them?
If we need all the, there's other requirements that we've got to meet and you can get that million dollar cover.
So that'll cover us in the future, so we don't have to go buy Bitcoin like we did?
Yeah, yeah, that should, yes.
I already, I asked, I didn't know if that was on this policy.
Which we did in the past.
Really?
We were held hostage for a while.
And we had them. Buy Bitcoins.
The same person has called me three times during the same meeting.
They are persistent.
Three times now.
Okay, well, is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second on the table.
Is that a question?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Chair both aye.
We can just sign that one that gets to Dave.
Okay, no.
I don't have to stamp it.
Jake, we're moving on to you, private policy, the website and texting.
Just hand it.
Any things to sign it?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, so I sent out last week, uh late last week, um a texting policy that was being approved by the county attorney. Um, this is for a service that we're going to provide citizens to be able to do um appointment reminders, offer a little bit of more county business type thing um to, like, say, for instance, the treasurer is the one that's going to be mainly using the service. Um, they are, it's just communication with the general public, um just doing an outreach, that situation to them. Um, one of the big things that they're talking about is appointment reminders, because a lot of times um a citizen maybe forgets or overlooks or, or for whatever reason, and Sherry has a slot that was originally slated for someone else, that's no longer being filled with their appointments regarding driver's license. Um, furthermore, like, if we're dealing with, like, titles and things along those lines, where the uh citizen is waiting for a title to come into our D M V, they um, we can give them a notification to say, hey, that title work has been presented, um when would you like to come in? Type situation, to make all that happen as far as get that service up and running.
Will it have, like, these confirmation numbers?
Yeah, kind, yep, and you can opt in, you can opt out, you can, um the whole point of this policy is to, to state to the public and to our seller, not the reseller, but the seller of this service that we have. Um, we're not using this for nefarious purposes, we're not using it for, like, a spamming situation. We're not gonna take their data and use it for other situations, it's just to present that and say, hey, we're providing the service to you guys, you can opt out at any time.
Cost.
Um, it's gonna be, so the service itself uh costs fifteen dollars a month per number, and.
For number, for phone?
For your number. Uh, per phone number, yes.
So how many phone numbers do we have for that service?
Um, we're gonna have three. Um, cause one of the things to note about this is that each phone number has two sides to it. You've got your calling side that everybody knows and is familiar with, and then you actually have a data side to that number as well. So we can actually use our existing numbers, like the main department head numbers, like twenty-one seventy-eight for the treasurer as a texting function as well, and then they can receive texts that way and send them out that way. And we don't, it's no additional cost for the texting back and forth, it's just the service that we're paying for.
So what three numbers of you wanna, treasure?
Treasure, the um, D M V, okay, driver's license and D M V. And then public health wants to do similar situations with their vaccinations and things along those lines.
So is that gonna be somewhat automated, that?
To an extent, yes. I, I can't completely automate the whole process, okay? The only thing I can really kind of automate is the opt-in and opt-out. Hey, you've opted in, you know, you've opted out.
So, I just wanna make sure that. So if I have an appoint, let's use a group thing, let's say your organization's over it. They have a group of people that are all scheduled to come in, is somebody gonna have to type that in to all of them? And if they accidentally forget somebody, is there any liability for us that everybody else got reminded and they didn't?
I, that.
Why insurance companies stopped doing it? You know, that they used to call you and remind you, now they can't anymore, because if they forget and they didn't, then uh just curious about that for our.
I mean, we didn't necessarily cover that, that, that's not really the design of this policy, as far as covering assurance and regards to overlooking someone. Um, I think there's a, a situation where we should have a list of individuals, so.
Just a question.
My question is, we, we get bombarded, say, we're so busy, we don't have time to do anything else, and now we got time to send text messages out to everybody?
I'm wondering how that, I, I really wonder how that works.
Well, is this gonna, maybe the same time?
So, um, to.
I know.
I don't either. Um. Cause this was a request by.
Uh, Sherry's been the main driver of this, okay? Um, and.
Which I could see a possibility of saving time too, if you're out waiting.
So, to, to kind of further alleviate that thought process as far as, like, whether or not it's efficient for the employee. This is, you can put this on any machine, and it all ties to one number, so it's not just eighty or, or, or maybe, or they can all monitor it and then respond accordingly, okay? So they can all log into this and, and monitor that, that process.
They had a list of numbers, so they can go in on their computer, type a message, and it mass sends it out to everybody. So through that list of numbers that they have.
You could do that, the intent.
Like a group text.
Yeah, but the policy is not necessarily, it's trying to keep us from doing spamming, so to speak. Um, it's just, the whole point is to keep that list, so we know who's in and who's out. Um, but I, I, I'm getting a little.
We're in the weeds, because the policy is basically about what they cannot do on it.
What, what we as the county entity can and cannot do, or will not do.
And the rest of it's for somebody else.
You're just wanting to verify appointments, am I wrong?
That's pretty much it, and this is the first step.
B A uses something exactly like that, alright? They sent, like, this is for my, one of my appointments next week, alright? Your appointment for Omaha Sleep, Sleep C, Sleep C P A, following in the fifth floor. Okay, reply for Y thirty-seven to confirm, or N thirty-eight to cancel.
Yep.
So basically, you do that a week ahead, your person knows, oh, hey, I got that appointment next week, and I will tell you, there's times that I don't know I got an appointment. And I'll give that, that week before, and I can call and check on it. Otherwise, you can say, well, no, I'm not gonna make it, so they can reschedule somebody else into that slot, you don't waste that time. That's what I guess we're up to.
And, and this is, this is the first step of that process, we have to have something on the website.
And it's been approved by our attorney?
So that, yes.
And it's up.
Did we use other counties' privacy policy to?
No.
Or not?
Um.
Because I was just shocked when I first read it, and it was eight pages long.
Yeah, this was. It was, so I pulled it from our reseller, they have a policy, and we, we started from there. And, and we're, and, and wrote it, and it was like two, maybe three pages, and then I brought the county attorney in and, well, it just kind of blew up a little bit, and as far as that's concerned, but any terms of service or things along those lines, they're fifteen pages, twenty pages long, so.
So calling ahead, looked at it, and does approve that.
Yes.
All these, we maze and we maze and we maze is just, that's about three pages of it, what we, we generally won't, but we might.
Right.
Uh, but use a third party and give it a name.
Nice point, yes, it does simplify things.
And what I have an application. What I'm asking here is to take this policy and be able to post it on the website. That's what I, cause the county owns the website, and I'm asking for approval for that.
It's been approved by our attorney, which is the final step in all of these things. There we go.
Motion in a second.
I was gonna get to that.
Any further discussion?
You knew me, Mr. Terry.
We knew.
That horse was lying here.
How much does it cost to po, post this eight pages on a website?
So, um, it's a one-time cost for Brian, it's gonna be a hundred dollars to make the page. Budget. Um, I, it's a hundred dollars.
Who's budget are these phone calls coming out?
Um, the texting is gonna be treasury, public health.
Alright, so it ain't out of yours, it's out of theirs.
Alright, alright.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair both aye. Jake, on to your next one, approved I C I T assessment date, January twenty eighth, twenty ninth.
So, these are two documents. Um, we had an assessment done back in November of twenty eighteen. These documents haven't changed, um with the exception of the price of the assessment itself, okay? Um, for those that were not here during that period, um, this assessment is done by my affiliate and fellow I T directors um throughout the state, um, the individuals that will be doing this particular assessment are listed in there. What I am looking for a signature on is to indemnify them um for anything that they do during the twenty eighth and twenty ninth of this month. Um.
I thought we approved, like, the cost was like four grand.
Yes, it is. Yep, yep.
Submit an invoice for four thousand dollars.
And that's what these, these documents are covering for I C I Ts side of it. I haven't presented anything to the board regarding that cost. Um, and.
This is for our assessment?
Yes, this is for the, uh, the assessment of the county, um, and it's I T and financials, is what it's based off of.
Because the last time, Kai, that, the way I understand that they did it, that the county determined that we need to hire an I T director. And then those of that assessment that had been done, so we're hoping that the assessment will say, we don't need an I T person anymore.
Yep, they make the recommendation, is what they do with their assessment.
And hopefully they'll give us a long-term.
Yep, they'll give me another, yep, another roadmap, because I do have an, I have a roadmap that I took when I first started the position, and I went through that.
Based on what their assessment was, I told you what you needed to do.
Yeah.
Yep.
As you were hired.
Yep.
Yep, and they've done a number of second assessments now, rounds of second assessments, just for that fact.
Yeah.
Seeing if you're on track and what needs to be done and.
And who picks?
Second assessments with other county.
I'm sorry.
Who picks this team?
Uh, I C I T, the, the, the leaders do.
They actually.
Um, they'll go in there, and they're gonna really go in and check to see what our vulnerabilities are yet, you know, and they're gonna go through the whole rigmarole, so.
They'll visit with all the, they'll visit with all the departments.
Yep, and then they'll, they'll get, they'll ask their opinion of me and of I T in general.
Scare though it ran somewhere, where they come in and shut you down.
Right, um, and if, if you're curious about some of the individuals, one of them is Shelby, one of them, and the other one's Carol, and the third one that I know of is uh Manona, they're all coming in, so. Um, so we actually have local people now.
When I did the first.
They all friends in here?
Findings and passwords.
I've seen them, I've talked to them.
For now.
Throw you over if you.
For now.
Yeah, I'm gonna go.
Those of you that weren't here, so.
This is good.
Most of young.
Let's tree, we're here, you know, some of the findings were the passwords were on a sticky note on the computer screen.
Yeah, that's gonna be, yeah.
Passwords were one, two, three, four, five.
Yeah.
I mean, it broke into our system in like thirty seconds.
Yeah, it was quick, so.
Which was at the time was pretty common across the state, it wasn't just us, the proper county, so.
Jake, so you know, the twenty-eighth and ninth.
Yeah, I told them.
Yep.
Okay, will be budget sessions.
Yes.
Work around that.
Yes, um, I've scheduled my budgeting session uh Monday at the end of day.
But even for them, them asking to visit other departments, so that.
Right. I'll, I'll let the, I'll let I C I T know that as well, so.
Well, do we have a motion to approve the I C I T assessment on January twenty eighth and twenty ninth?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kai? Second by Jean? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, Chair both aye.
I just like to make one point in order, nothing against you personally, but you're our employee, Paul, their employee, he's got a time at nine forty-five to come in here, I said, no sense in you sitting here for an hour waiting for us. Why don't we schedule you as a time for now on, so you, and you come in? We don't waste your time.
That'd be greatly appreciated.
No sense you sitting here for an hour.
And let's try to do it in the beginning, so we can stay on schedule.
I'm sorry, you don't leave your.
Which is, wouldn't be simple.
Every time, Kai, every time.
When you have something to discuss with us, just bring it up to Terry.
Okay.
And you'll know when you're gonna be out.
Uh, I see, that's.
Does Dave sign here?
Yeah, that's gonna be, um.
Or about.
And then, cause one is the indemnity, and the other one is the uh what was the other one? I think it's the actual approval and the four thousand dollars. So, um.
Alright. You're good to go.
Anything else you got for me?
Thank you.
No.
Jake, Jake, why is here?
And, and Terry, so, uh, in our department, you know, we're, we're working towards getting all of our engineering documents uh on the webpage, and yeah, I just, it's okay if I just take a minute or so here. Um, and so we're looking at Neapolitan Labs, we've got all the documents scanned, scanned in. It's just a matter of them then helping us upload them, so they can be on the internet under a platform that's easy to edit and change. And so, all the petitions, which, there's eighteen hundred of them, that are in Terry's office and those few drawers back there, have been scanned in too, and if you remember, the petitions are like the birth certificate of a road, it's what gives rise to the ability for us to maintain a road, and so, the uh I'd like to get those, kind of the last piece of that, getting that all uploaded into the webpage. And then there's these large maps.
Does that have your coordinates to your corners?
No, no, the petition, the petition talks about the establishment of the roadway and the roadway width. And so, like, for surveyors, that's kind of important for them.
Well, that's what I mean, to have your mark.
So, the question, I guess, Terry, this is for you too, is it, those large books that have each township mapped in, and they're old maps, and they've got new books now that are in nice sleeves. Uh, but I think those have been scanned in, Terry, is that correct?
They're on cot.
Yeah, and so what I was wondering is if, so on those, so if, if you're a surveyor, somebody, you, you, you want, you know, ideally, you'd be able to go to our webpage, pull up Iowa Township, look at three hundred ninetieth and, you know, W Avenue. And on there, it has a little number written down and that little number in red is the roadway petition. So, you know, you could be able to just take the maps, and I don't know if this is possible or not, but uh, we're trying to kind of get everybody together here. If we could take those maps and have them accessible, so let's say a surveyor, somebody comes into the webpage and they click on Iowa Township and uploads that map, then they can look at it, they can see what the petition number is, and then they can go in and all of our petitions would be available too. So it would be easily accessible. Now, all the, really the hard work, which was scanning in all those petitions is done. Now it's just kinda putting everything together and then having, uh, that Neapolitan Labs, like, put it on the webpage, so.
Well, I think a lot of legwork is done almost, yeah, um, it's.
They want to design a program to make that a blank.
I, I mean, there might be some work that Brian needs to do. I, I, I have a meeting with him on Thursday to, just kind of a kickoff to get an understanding a little bit and then we're gonna bring the other parties in, but, um, the, if it's already on cot, then we just need to get access to cot stuff. And we should be able to just kick it over to Brian, um, and have those two talk to each other.
But just that we're all here, it's kinda, you know, trying to get all of that stuff kinda cleaned up, uh, still that before it's break down here, so.
Yep, and I think with that, it should be, as far as cost is concerned, it's all gonna be on the website. We're gonna own all that. It's not gonna be, you know, like a thought or anything, at least I would like to.
Well, they don't own our stuff.
No, no, I mean, that's not, yeah, I'm saying it's all inclusive in, with the website itself, so.
The only thing I'd like to take a look at is if we could take a look at one of the maps and see what it looks like digitally, to see if those little numbers are eligible. You know, and they might not all be, barely, if you know ninety percent of those are eligible, still saved. Whoever's looking for that information, most of the time from coming in, if they can't see it, maybe they can make a phone call or they can handle it themselves. Or they could perhaps zoom in. I, I don't know, but I mean, that would be the one thing. But anyhow, that would, basically every engineering document that we would have then would be available to the public on the web.
So it would come until your office.
Or.
No, request your office.
Yeah, so I just, so.
Uh, Gene, if you wouldn't mind, since you're gonna be a committee member now, um, at your convenience, like to take you a walk through.
Oh, I love it. Do I get a badge or something?
No, we can just, well.
You, you can't bring a special badge?
Sorry, not at this time. Yeah.
Alright, fine.
But yeah.
No, uh, probably not today.
Right.
Uh, but.
Yeah.
Maybe this week sometime?
Yeah, just, uh, let me know.
I got your number.
Yep.
Yeah, I appreciate it very much. Get me, probably asking what I knew about it, I said nothing.
Uh, anything else from the board that you need from me?
You're good.
No, just schedule, schedule your time. No sense wasting your time, sitting here.
That's a great point.
Terry about it.
New year, kind of, uh,
Sure.
That way you don't have to wonder when you can get to words in, so.
So, let's move on to we commission positions.
Ten applications.
You have them.
I do, we have.
Did we ever get a report from any last, is it commissioner?
No, we didn't.
Just do November, wouldn't it? That's about that.
In the past, when we did this, we did have, I remember a few more applicants than what we have today, where
I don't remember.
Cecil and I interviewed, I wanna say four or five people. But we had more applications. Today we have.
Gene and I interviewed, what, two? Three, three people.
Yeah, oh, two for sure, maybe three that didn't make his impact in our mind.
Maybe I don't. That's what I'm saying.
So, what leads us here today, at the closing of the application date, we have to.
Oh.
So do we need to have a committee to interview, or is it obvious? Can we just look at their resumes?
It might take us a minute.
Super more qualifications than somebody else?
No, no.
That's up to you, however you guys want. It is totally up to us. I mean, we can pass these around, you can look at them.
You do this one, I'll read this one and then we'll trade.
I, I looked at both of them.
I mean, do you think there's someone that has outstanding qualifications above the other person?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
I think so too, just this first.
So he is rather obvious as to which one.
I think in history of the career, start signing some stuff.
I think they're all good.
Thank you, and I appreciate it all. Do have.
Signed everything.
Thank you.
You'll forget a few more meetings and then you'll remember all of them. I think.
We'll come and go, right?
We'll keep an eye on.
All good.
Those people's handwriting.
I think they're trying to run meetings, so it's easy for me to look at them.
Alright. They, this, uh, employer and, uh, years on the job.
Dave, are you familiar with like Carroll County's, um, all their training? You know, Sarah.
Okay, Sarah, is that right? There you go.
But she's the administrator, she's the zoning administrator. You don't think that that's just her bulk and bench, just solely zoning administrator?
Yes, unless there's any other.
Might be a girl, but I think they'll, that they might just have a full-time zoning administrator.
Might be. Full-time, part-time deal type thing, well.
Because it just has the office hour of eight to four thirty, you know. Her email, Carroll County, that I would not joke.
I will text that again real fast.
I'm just curious, the reason I went there is I thought maybe it was gonna be like, that she was the assessor. Just said Carroll County zoning, not sure number, oh, see it comes up there. One person. And like their own office number didn't have like the assessor's number, you know what I mean?
Uh, Steph said, yes, she is, not just pretending. She's just zoning? Oh, sorry. What's that?
Who does it?
Um, they got a full-time position in Carroll instead of Rayville.
For zoning, it's a full-time position?
But she said there's other.
Oh, other duties, she might be there weekly.
I just, I, I see what she says here. She's, oh, she's our assessor as well, but we pay out on a different budget. Apparently she also does GIS. Okay.
I think we're gonna find that stuff norm.
Um, after looking at the application, is there a will of the board of choose the name, make a subcommittee for interviews?
Subcommittee, um, we have one that has experience.
That's history, I would, I think one would be very suited for the position.
Retired.
Yeah, I think we can just make a motion.
Think it's a no-brainer.
Make motion nominating that person.
Yeah, my thoughts also, just a history or a lifetime career of in that profession um, makes it stand out apart, so.
And you certainly, I mean, I think it's important to be known by the public and certainly he is, that when he would show up and say, you have a problem, they would recognize, yeah, I probably have a problem if he's telling me I have a problem.
Right, there was like an aspect. Um, with that, are we going to just prove who we want to, uh, offer, offer the job to, or do we, and then discuss the hourly rate later? Um, because currently the hourly rate is fourteen forty-five for a twenty-hour week. Right.
And we will be furnishing the vehicle for them to use because our supervisor vehicle will be available to sign up.
So the April first to August thirty-first, twenty hours a week. We will provide a vehicle. Unless you wanna offer the job, have them come in and then discuss, pay with them at that time. Or we put a number on it and offer it with a number on it.
I like putting numbers on it and being fair upfront and you know, with transportation and come here to get your vehicle, but we provide a vehicle for you to go out and do yours.
I just, for the experience in what they're gonna be doing, that just is.
That's true.
Seems very low, low number.
With his expertise especially.
I mean, did they all know what the salary was and we didn't post anything?
No.
No. They basically just applied for the job.
Right.
As they have a number and, uh, they agree to, or if that's not at all what they were thinking and.
What kind of number do you like?
I'm just throwing this out, I mean, if you see no help on the farm, it's twenty dollars an hour.
Jen's saying the same thing.
Not having any knowledge of what a chemist.
You want good help, that's. Experienced help.
And to keep them around, you know. Cause, cause this way, you know, if you're.
What did we say, twenty hours a week during the season?
And what, and we used to pay mileage and that was more than what we paid for wages, if I understand correctly. By the time they turned in their fuel and their sixty-three cents, so mile, we paid them more mileage and this way they'll have a car, vehicle, I should say.
Twenty-two fifty's four hundred and fifty bucks.
A week?
A week. That's that twenty hour.
Gotta leave ourselves room to negotiate, we should have a high and a low.
I'm telling you, but I'm just giving you a number.
Yeah.
Should be five hundred if you go to twenty-five and.
The range.
Yeah. If you say twenty dollars, you're, you're for it.
Let's offer it and see if, if they'll take it at what, uh, we're thinking and we'll from there.
So I'll need a motion.
Since you're doing a vehicle, what are you liking for a number? I mean, or don't you wanna throw a hard number, twenty?
Yeah, I think, and we can always, he can say no, or I'm, I expect this and negotiate that.
Yeah.
So.
Are getting somebody with a lot of wisdom.
Do you have a motion with that applicant at a rate to offer?
Well, I'd make a motion now for twenty dollars an hour plus, like I said, we got the vehicle, so.
To.
For twenty hours a week. Oh. To, uh, Mr. Kinkle.
Okay.
I didn't know where you were going, I thought we already decided that.
No, I know, I'm just for this motion.
Yeah, second.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion?
So who's your contact, Roger?
Thank you.
Okay.
That's all in favor, say aye.
Aye. With seven hundred and fifty dollars visus. Oh, that might be a, a good full-time part-time job with a, what was it? I mean, office.
No office, that's the truck. Oh, that brings us down to the end. I would like to mention our supervisor's budget.
Yeah.
Something that we need to look at. I think the numbers, as far as health insurance and that are pretty cut and dry of what need to be adjusted. Michelle sent those, sent those to us, um.
Nobody else seems taken or getting nominated or anything, so.
I'm gonna get on this here.
Mr. Dozer, was that be considered?
Nobody will know though.
That be considered, what skills?
So we'll need to make those adjustments, so, and then, of course, selling.
Those columns in a long time.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing too, Ty, and we haven't quite used all of it. If you look at our schools, I mean, I know you've been very conscious of not just going to everything.
Yeah.
But we also, if you look at it, where did I look? We had budgeted twenty-seven five last year, we've only spent seventy-two hundred.
That might be high.
And I'm just, granted, we have.
Once you got a bunch going, just go to.
When I did that twenty-seven five, I was figuring everybody going to the annual and the spring for ISAC. Cause I didn't know. And then like the supervisors state, we always all go through.
Which we do have.
Did those all and, and counted all five, cause, you know.
Right, right.
Kyle, Kyle goes if he don't have farming in the way. I didn't know what Craig would do and I didn't, and I assumed you'd be going to everything, so I know Gene usually always does. And then I, I wasn't real sure what to budget on the stuff that I'm doing with Naco. And, you know, I mean, that's tending to be, depends on where we're going.
Right, which we still have.
Things a year that I really have, should be going to since I'm on a vice president and stuff like that, or vice chairman's giving.
Just from the ISAC plan, we do have NCO statewide supervisor, spring conference, all hitting us before the end of the year.
Right.
And then you have, um.
Oh, and the spring conference.
You'll have DC.
Yeah, I got the legislative conference and then I won't have anything until next year. Cause then the annual conference will be in July and then the rural action caucus thing, and I don't even know where the hell it's at, is gonna be in usually November.
Cause I don't, I don't wanna short anybody that wants to go, but if we're, we don't need it all, I just, if we need to fine tune that.
But these budgets are al- always evolving. I mean, you can see maybe a new norm starting to develop there, you know, we twenty-four, three, four, thirty-five hundred budgeted, used ten-three. So we're gonna be in between that ten-three and twenty-seven-five somewhere, so you get another year in there.
We'll have a better idea.
You're gonna have a, you're gonna start developing that new normal. As long as somebody stays in the Naco realm, you know, shit.
Well, I, I'm saying, I give our board credit for being active. We've said this over and over again about, just like Paul with Hunger Canyon, you have to have, you know, somebody at the table speaking their mind and we've been very good at that as a board.
Well, that's like I, like I, like I've been saying, like I said at the other meeting, you know, it, we need more rural counties involved in that. And it's, that's the card counties, it's harder to budget it.
Right.
But we have less say on the national level because the rural, or excuse me, the urban counties, they can afford to send their people and they do, and they send them in vast numbers, so their people are all elected to the the positions of, of leadership and then the legislative priorities tend to focus on city that, the city projects versus rural. I mean, no, they don't forget us, don't get me wrong, but you gotta make a lot of the noise for making picture we're in.
So I guess with that, just think about that for our budget going forward, if you will, but here, we'll have to get that turned into.
That, with us just on one sufficient, we only get one vote, but I'd like to see more counties than Iowa involved.
Then it's good to bring back what other counties are doing and what's they're looking forward to in the future and just, uh, that camaraderie of hearing what struggles and good and bad things, so.
For, for information, Cass County, you know, where Atlantic is, um, their website, you go to their county departments and the same name, Mike Cannon pops up if you go nine-one-one communications director, emergency management director, and zoning administrator.
Oh.
His name is associated with each one of those, so there are some counties that are
EMA.
Maybe he wants to take that.
Combining EMA, nine-one-one, and zoning administrator.
That's, that's all, all together possibly. Judge.
I'll talk to Sarah today.
Wish he had a, you know, a year under his belt, being.
So I was thinking, gosh dang, he's got a lot to do already this year.
He'd have been different if he took over.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be harder. You know.
Yeah, it would be hard.
And he's establishing a full-time position.
Exactly.
He is.
Gonna take over a full-time position.
No, well, not short.
I'm not trying to say he wouldn't do it, I'm just saying it's gonna be a lot bigger challenge for him.
Terry, do you have anything else for us?
He is a hustler.
I don't think so. Citizens in pool, we have nobody in the room. Anybody on Zoom, like to weigh in?
Did you just put for our public hearing that there was a user?
I did. Hearing none, then I would hesitate on motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, I'll wait a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I haven't made motions for so long, I was.
You can.
You can, as president, as president, you can make motions, you can second a motion.
On a board our side, it's actually, you can do everything that.